Okay, I'm going to call to order the regular city council meeting Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. I am going to ask Mr. Hackett if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All stand please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into the public forum, I'll announce that we're going to move the old, the new business item on PG&E up in front of the old business items. So we will get to that very early in the meeting. Please move forward as we can. So I'm going to do the roll call.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Councilwoman Coburnstein.
Here.
Chutow.
Here.
Kootson.
Here.
Okay, we'll move to public of municipal concern that are not on tonight's agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited at the meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas less and less until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Is there any public comment at this point?
Peter Edlin, 1817 Main Street, St. Helena, California. I've been planning a common outside the tunnel of the Elms that's coming southbound. That's supposed to be a radar sign that will alert people that 35 miles an hour is the speed limit. And I want to get to that in a minute, but maybe you are not aware, an accident occurred tonight about 5:30 where somebody southbound lost control and apparently hit one of the trees, veered off the road, sheared off the rear end of another car going northbound, which if the timing had been by seconds different, there would be, you know, probably a fatality to be looking at. So things, you know, can be serious, and I've said it before, we're dealing with a real powder keg here if we don't act on these issues that flow from this hotel. I mean, it's been three years that we've been trying to get something done, and never have I heard anything. The subcommittee hasn't come up with solutions. I've written memos. I've to the sign. That sign, if you, I came back from a long trip about three weeks ago, and I drove into town from Calistoga after a lot of hours. As I came through Calistoga, there was a speed limit sign that nearly drove me off the road because I must have been going too fast, and the light came on from this thing. It just, you know, I figured I had probably on Highway 29 without any trouble. But it's been over a year since we've seen this supposed radar sign get put up north of the Elms. I ran into the go up. The answer was, well, it's been raining. It's hard to get the crews out to do this or that. You know, it's thirds the size of a normal highway sign. At night, you can barely and at least one item. You know, as far as the rest of the things, parking on Elmhurst, I mean, I think I've mentioned it to you already, that I can set my watch when these shift changes take place at the hotel. And it's something I'm frankly very sick and tired of. But nevertheless, let's get the speed limit sign down or up, the radar enforced, thus maybe we have some hope. And I thought there was some study the state was going to be undertaking as far as speed limits are concerned. You know, I'd love to hear where the status of that, that's been supposedly it was take a year and a half to get the study done. Probably hasn't even started yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arthur Penya, 1140 Zinfandel Lane, St. Helena. About a month or so ago, Chris Petlock from Sonoma came to talk to you a little bit about the AB 857, which is a bill to enable cities to more easily charter public banks. And this is kind of a follow-up to that. And the good news is that the bill has already passed in the Assembly, and now it's in the Senate. And I'd like to ask you institute website to tell you what it's about a little. A public bank is a bank that's make city or state deposits like taxes and fees, that kind of thing. And today, cities and states put their money in Wall Street banks. Those banks leverage our public funds in order to dominate the financialized speculative economy. States borrow money from Wall Street institutions and bondholders at high interest rates and pay large fees to keep our money in their banks. This is not a cost-effective way to do business. Cities and states could be keeping their state-owned banks, we cut out Wall Street middlemen. Our community's cash stays home to benefit us, and bank fees are invested into our communities. Public banks can help us create the communities we can afford. We want lower interest rates for local small business loans, local control of our tax dollars, investment in our local communities, and ethical and transparent financial institutions managing our public funds. Public banks can be the financial engine that makes this happen for our communities. So now that this bill is in the Senate, I would again ask you to please consider endorsing AB 857, a bill to enable cities to more easily charter public banks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment?
I'm Anthony McKelley, 1125 Cornella. This is the third time I've been here, and hopefully it's a charm tonight, with this plan for Adams Street. Everything that is wants to do, whatever it is. I want to bring up a couple of things about the parking area. Parking space, there's 80 spaces there. That's 25, that's $2 million. PG&E parking lot, if you bought it, is 1.5 and probably $200,000 to develop it. You could do this for 500, about 500,000, and there's $539,328 in the parking. Talked this evening about the farmer's market. But last week, we played, I play on Cuatro Estupidos, and we played them last week, and I asked Ed, what's going on at the farmer's market? His problem today is that he has to turn that area there is as long as what they have at Crane Park, but it's 65 feet wide. At Crane Park, it's only 41 feet wide. So 50 percent. That means more competition at the market for us locals, more the little park on the corner, I talked to Jamie Daly, who is the son of John Daly and Virginia Daly. And I had once petitioned to name that Daly Park. I prefer it was named Daly Grove, in honor of him planning that for his parents. The other structure there is the library. I mean, they have to have at least $7 million to build that building, because I was a contractor for 40 years. They claim they can raise the money. They just need a place to go. The amphitheater there is for the library to hold outside functions, for the vintners to use, and anybody else who wants to throw a concert here. And in my proposal, I have left all the vineyard as much as possible, and so it's still scenic, because the city, when they bought it, they said uses to include possible open space, a park, and a community center. That's when they bought this property in 2000. So I'm here tonight to ask the council to please agendize this, and let these communities go after 19 years to go fundraise. It's been long enough, and we need to do something with the community part of this property. I'm setting enough away future discussion. I'm not taking two and a half acres there. Thank you very much. So I hope I get two votes tonight to agendize this as quick as we can, because I would like to see the farmer's market there next spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any?
Good evening, Mayor Ellsworth and city council members. I'm Mike Hackett. I live in Angwin. borders of it. I don't think it's ever too late to show gratitude for your tremendous support for Measure C last year. It shows that I'm, in a way, preaching to the choir here, you're all interested in climate change and the crisis that we are finding, or something else. But I am a serious person when it comes to the climate crisis. We really have to take our emissions downward in the next few years, and we keep continuing to develop things in the watersheds that are going to push us and are in the wrong direction. You are going to be confronted with the ability to support a climate proclamation. I think it's a good half step. It's a very good step in the right direction. We need to really tackle this head-on, and actually, in my personal opinion, cap all deforestation in the watersheds. We know, all of us in this room, how important Angwin is to St. Helena, that we are your water supply. and the streams and the repairing corridors. After Measure C was slightly defeated, Napa County was tree protection ordinance. I'm here to tell you that that was a great 30,000 acres of developable forested land in the Ag watershed, or 28,000 acres of land developable in the Ag watershed. This will affect you, I believe, that the cities in the county should have an equal voice of what takes place in the Ag watershed.
Is there any additional public comment?
Just on that note, I recall that the city of St. Helena sent a letter weighing in on the act that Mr. Hacket sort of partner with some studying about our watershed. I'm not sure if anybody ever responded. If not, then I think we should follow up on that response.
We did join, we're participants of the drought contingency plan, which also looks at the watershed for the countywide, the countywide. So that hasn't kick-started yet. That starts the end of this month with the county offices, which will, I believe, it looks at some of these concerns that we have with our watershed.
The letter I'm referring to was signed, authored by Mr. Presswich.
No, and we can follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close the public forum. We'll move to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. I will start with our
earlier this evening to consider two potential cases of litigation and no report.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the city council's special meeting of June 6th last week, also want to report out a clear updates. Coming on June 20th and June 21st, and we have flyers in the back of the room, is a two-day open house. We're adding a little vitality to Maine. And we're calling this reimagining Civic St. Helena. And really, this is a conversation about facilities. So the open house, it's drop-in format, and we encourage people to begin stopping by as early as 9:30 on Thursday, June 20th. There will be a couple of presentations in the late afternoon at 4 o'clock and 5 o'clock on land planning and library trends. There's an evening reception that begins at 6, and we'll close that evening at 7. The following day, on Friday, the workshop, the open house, begins at 11:30, and we have a couple of presentations related to parks and rec facilities and civic spaces at 12:30 and 1:30, and the storefront closes at 4:30. So that's reimagining St. Helena, and that's really, that's coming in the next two weeks. Also, I want to take an opportunity to introduce a new staff member that we have, and it's the assistant to the city manager. We did a recruitment, had a lot of people and up-and-comers in the profession, and I'm really, I think is in the audience back there. She's standing. Sometimes stealing from your neighbors is a good thing. We stole her from Association of Northern California, and that's really an indication that she has her career on a great trajectory, and we're really thankful that she's here. And my final update, I'd like to invite the planning director to the podium along with the mayor. Sometimes we don't agendize these things to keep them a surprise. But the city decided to poach one of our employees. But we're really grateful for the contributions that Noah House has provided to the city over the last several years. Noah began his service to the city in May of 2015, and it culminates tonight. He was thrilled that the council voted to adopt the general plan, the 2040 general plan at your prior meeting. It's a really nice capstone to his career in St. Helena. And I want to read this plaque that we've presented, that we're presenting to Noah tonight. "In appreciation of your dedication, leadership, and outstanding service to the city of St. Helena, and for St. Helena's 2040 general plan adoption, May 2015 to June 2019." We're going to miss you.
I want to thank Noah for really laying the groundwork for the activity to the community, and his great achievement was getting this general plan over the finish line that has been over a decade of work. So it was a wonderful job, and
I just, I'm really honored to have been a part of this community, and obviously, this is not my achievement. This is all of your achievement and all of I will always cherish this opportunity to have been a part of, you know, St. Helena, and for the opportunity that this community gave me, and this council, and this staff. You have an amazing team, both the elected and appointed, as well as the staff here to work for y'all. Thank you.
Any reports from our finance director, Ms. Mitz, our city clerk, Mr. Chafopoulos, our planning director, Mr. House?
I could have just stayed up at the podium, I guess. I just wanted to announce hot off the presses, 2040 general plan. Hard copy available at the library and at City Hall, and next week it will be available on the website. So have at it. Feel free to read it. There's a laundry list of things to get done here. So good luck with those endeavors.
Our director of public works, Ms. Smithies?
I just want to report out that the radar sign on Main Street was installed last Friday, and it's working, and it's working. Obviously, I'm not sure if that's the one that Mr. Edlin was responding to, but it was up as of last Friday and operational, just north of the Pratt intersection. In addition, several weeks ago, the subcommittee for Pratt and the concept plans here pretty soon on the result of that conversation, to bring back the near future to council for review.
Very good. Thank you. Councilperson Kootson.
No update.
Councilperson Chutow.
I did just want to remind everybody that the library hours have been extended. and Saturday from noon until 5. Also, we had our first day of the free breakfast for kids, age up, you can go up until 18, and there were 37
Ms. Coburnstein?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Follow up that Paul made in his letter to the Star. I don't know if you've all put together cost figures. We take the opportunity to move forward to examine our funding sources, beginning with the general fund. And what I'm suggesting is that we recontact Ken Decker, who has advised the city on many occasions about bonding and layering bonding, and ask him to take a look at our general fund and the assumptions, and figure out how much capital improvement work our general what years it could start. He is a well-respected municipal finance consultant. I think he'd be the perfect person. So if anybody else would agree, I would like to agendize this so that he could, you know, get working and maybe report back in July after we have our break, perhaps. Is there anyone else?
I wonder, I think it's Mark Walsh also was a consultant to the city. And I don't really have a sense of Ken versus Mark.
I'm suggesting Ken because he is more specifically a municipal finance consultant as opposed to a CPA. on some other bonding things, and he's quite familiar with the city.
So I would certainly support that.
Okay. Okay, I have one. We received an interesting, to me, quite well for everyone. She urged us, she said that the Adams discuss, she said it was unhealthy for the city financially and as a community. And I think that sums it up pretty well. You know, I went back and looked at our speakers and our letters, both pro and con, we had actually more people urging us to move ahead than to do nothing. But my point is, all of these people are our constituents. They all voted and put their trust in us as a collective body to make a decision. Lorraine suggested we make the connection between empty storefronts and our thoughts on Adams Street. there really was any kind of connection at all. And I would just go back to this study that we did last summer. I don't know if you were sitting in on our meetings at that time, Anna and David was not here. But we learned through our downtown market study that most of our local-serving merchants cannot achieve the sales volume that they need from the approximately 2,000 local resident households, that there is a critical need for attracting visitors and other Napa Valley residents to shop in St. Helena. part of it, and there's also a part that relates to our business community. She urged us to create a vision for shape that includes Adams Street, and hopefully accept that the rest is for another part of what we call our community. And I think what she's talking about is compromise. And this
Just a point of order. I hate to do this, but and what we're asking for, and I apologize for that, but I think we're
no reason to hold back on Phase One, the RFQ. I think with the timing of when the library decisions are going to have to be made in September or so,
Any reports from our finance director, Ms. Mitz, our city clerk, Ms. Chafopoulos, our planning director, Mr. House?
I could have just stayed up at the podium, I guess. I just wanted to announce hot off the presses, 2040 general plan. Hard copy available at the library and at City Hall, and next week it will be available on the website. So have at it. Feel free to read it. There's a laundry list of things to get done here. So good luck with those endeavors.
Our director of public works, Ms. Smithies?
I just want to report out that the radar sign on Main Street was installed last Friday, and it's working. And it's working. Obviously, I'm not sure if that's the one that Mr. Edlin was responding to, but it was up as of last Friday and operational just north of the Pratt intersection. In addition, several weeks ago, the subcommittee for Pratt and the concept plans here pretty soon on the result of that conversation to bring back the near future to council for review.
Very good. Thank you. Councilperson Knudsen.
No update.
Councilperson Chateau.
I did just want to remind everybody that the library hours have been extended six and Saturday from noon until five. Also, we had our first day of the free breakfast for kids aged up, you can go up until 18, and there were 37 here.
Very good.
Ms. Coburn, Councilperson Coburnstein.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. That Paul made in his letter to the Star. I don't know if you've all put together cost figures. We take the opportunity to move forward to examine our funding sources, beginning with the general fund. And what I'm suggesting is that we recontact Ken Decker, who has advised the city on many occasions about bonding and layering bonding, and ask him to take a look at our general fund and the assumptions, and figure out how much capital improvement work our general what years it could start. He is a well-respected municipal finance consultant. I think he'd be the perfect person. So if anybody else would agree, I would like to agendize this so that he could, you know, get working and maybe report back in July after we have our break, perhaps.
I support that.
I wonder I think it's Mark Walsh also was a consultant to the city. And I don't really have a sense of Ken versus Mark.
I'm suggesting Ken because he is more specifically a municipal finance consultant as opposed to a CPA. Only on some other bonding things, and he's quite familiar with the city.
So I would certainly support.
Okay.
Support that.
Okay, I have one. We received an interesting, to me, quite well for everyone. She urged us. She said that the Adams she said it was unhealthy for the city financially and as a community. And I think that sums it up pretty well. You know, when I went back and looked at our speakers and our letters, both pro and con, we had actually more people urging us to move ahead than to do nothing. But my point is, all of these people are our constituents. They all voted and put their trust in us as a collective body to make a decision. Lorraine suggested we make the connection between empty storefronts and our thoughts on Adams where there really was any kind of connection at all. And I would just go back to this study that we did last summer. I don't know if you were sitting in on our meetings at that time, Anna and David was not here. But we learned through our downtown market study that most of our local serving merchants cannot achieve the sales volume that they need from the approximately 2,000 local resident households. That there is a critical need for attracting visitors and other Napa Valley residents to shop in St. Helena. Part of it, and there's also a part that relates to our business community. She urged us to create a vision for shape that includes Adams Street. And hopefully accept that the rest is for another part of what we call our community. And I think what she's talking about is compromise.
And this Just a point of order. I hate to do this, but news and what we're asking for.
Get to the point.
And I apologize for that, but I think we're
No reason to hold back on phase one, the RFQ. I think with the timing of when the library decisions are going to have to be made in September or so, it might be good to know at that point if we have any financial partner who is interested in working with us on terms that we would like to work on. And so I would suggest that we agendize bringing back just phase one, the RFQ, for reconsideration at our next answer by the time we're making the important decisions about the streetscape and the library. And I'm going to turn to the three of you because obviously, if you're not interested, this wouldn't move forward. But I'm going to suggest that we do that.
I Yes. I think we need to do some internal study first with the ad hoc committee that we have. Approach this incredibly contentious issue. I think we can take it under advisement rather than immediately put it back on the agenda.
I feel as well. I feel there's some internal work on both financials and criteria before we bring it back. And I do believe we can bring it back and should
Okay. I think, you know, July, August.
Just look to the city manager for more direction with respect to how that would coincide with happen at the same time. I'm generally supportive of the concept of what Mary's doing, but I also think I prefer to have that first and lead along with Mary. No, I'm not going to throw you under the bus, Mary, but I'm looking at the process. I don't know. I know you probably haven't done a whole lot of research on getting that together, but is it possible for those two to come at the same time?
In terms of Ken Decker or any other financial person, we would first need to ask the question, how much time do you think that would take? I don't know if we have any resources left in his contract. And we may.
I actually just emailed Ken Decker to see about his availability. He's on vacation through June 13th. He's out of office. Came by, and I believe we, for the general fund, have a small amount left. So I have a note to check first thing tomorrow morning that.
And so we would we would need to, A, make sure there are resources available, and I would need to understand the timeline. We publish the next council meeting's agenda three days from now on the 14th. Unless there was interest in trying to evaluate something near term. And you, and we wanted to use this individual being, we couldn't get started until, unless we had a, unless we had
23rd or whatever, 24th. If you could report back to us at that point, then I figured the purpose of my bringing this forward now is he would have July, we at the end of the month. He's pretty familiar with our general fund and could look at the updated long range, you know.
I'm overlooking this. Do we have a special meeting that I'm overlooking?
We have a special meeting, I think, to interview applicants and nothing else on the agenda. We could add it if the next council meeting is.
I think we were potentially moving that to the 25th.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean that we can't schedule another meeting. I guess it's hard to have a conversation about direction on the item tonight without agendizing it for discussion so that we have clarity on who we're moving forward with. I would like to understand what, whether the person has resources in their contract today, and how much time it would take for them to perform that analysis. And I didn't really
Well, the suggestion was that he, look at the general he would, how it stretches out over the years. He did a similar thing with the ad hoc water rate committee, suggesting layering bonding and, you know, not doing it all at once, how it could be done that are built into our long range financial forecast. Since, I think when we get to September, and I think it would be very helpful to know before then, you know, what can the general fund do?
Through all the questions and present you some options so that maybe if we're bringing it back on the 25th, time to post the agenda, and we would potentially present you a few options to provide some feedback on. Only about bonding, it's, or, you know, what the, what the city's general fund can take from a bond perspect- at ways, you know, look at different types of opportunities and perspectives to A, you either sell Adams Street, or you do a general obligation bond. I think that's a false choice. I think that we have more choices than that. And so whatever we assign Ken or Mark Walsh or anyone to do, it should be, in my mind, broader. We really should be about option generating, not about option for closing. And I think that was the lesson that I got out of our meeting two weeks ago was what the community expects from us is not to rush to a decision, but to rush to generate options. So let's not just have two options. Let's look at the whole, the whole range.
So is it
I don't know what you're specifically recommending, but
All I'm recommending is that we have some options. That's my recommendation.
We appear to be going a little bit long, a little bit far on this, so think we could probably agendize it in such a manner that allows for both sort of viewpoints to be looked at in terms of either bond, more specific on a bond analysis, or something broader than that. To the city manager about how to move forward.
So it can be agendized to it, in a sense, large enough to sort of inventory all the options?
That would be my suggestion.
So with that, are we, did you have another point on?
No. You know, I requested the moving on the phase one, and I think we're going to wait till
Bring any reports?
Just briefly, because I know we're running out of time, and it's a long meeting with no air conditioning, apparently. Community has raised significant issues in my mind about the opening of Pratt Street Bridge. And I'd like to have a discussion on that, an agendized item for that. I'm concerned about some of the, the, well, I get quite a bit of email and other constituents talking about this problem, speeding and enforcement, whether we should keep it, keep the bridge closed and only open for emergency vehicles, the impact on Highway 29 congestion if it is closed. Big rigs going on to that bridge. So I'd like to agendize as a city and the county to improve that area. I am particularly concerned about left-hand turns going northbound there. For somebody else to second and agendizing that for, you know, a month or two from
Absolutely. Lots of concern about Pratt.
Okay. Well, I have a few things. Starting this Thursday, we're going to have the Chamber of Commerce concert series starting with Dennis Johnson and the Mississippi Ramblers. This is Thursday, June 13th, 6 to 8 p.m. That's free to the public this Thursday. And then the following Friday, June 21st, is a mariachi event that's going to be at the park, free to the public. That's at 6 p.m. as well. So hope to see everybody down downtown at Lyman Park. The next thing I'm going to mention is a, another PG&E issue. And then we'll get to the, the one most folks are here for. But we had a NICSIL alert on Friday about possible PG&E power shutdowns. We know that PG&E has told us that they will be shutting down the power in the event of Their NICSIL alert was pretty broad. People did not know where it was going to affect. So we talked to them and asked if they can be more specific. That would be helpful. But it brings up the fact that this is most likely going to be happening this summer. What we learned from PG&E, the most important thing for everybody is to have three days of emergency food and water for pile this. You can go online to places like the Red Cross. This is an emergency food and water bag for two people for three days. Whatever you Everybody has food and water that helps them operate more efficiently. We, as a city, will be looking at what we can do in terms of redundant power future, help, how do we help our businesses so that we have a plan in Preparedness is an action word. We all have to be prepared, and it's our job. So And we have a link on our website. Yes, city website, county website, PG&E website, all have more information. Okay. Thank you. And so now we are going to move to
Six point one.
Eleven.
Six point one.
Six point one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six point one. Oh, we're at our presentations in public recognition. This is a proclamation for outstanding service to the community. We're going to go up to the podium. It's a heavy proclamation, and I'm going to have to have the vice mayor carry it. If the other members of the council would like to join me, this is a, this is a proclamation for this is a proclamation for, I don't know if the recipient is here, but Jesse, do you have a, do you have a Outstanding service to the community. And I will be reading this proclamation from the city of St. Helena in recognition of Jesse Duarte's many contributions to our city. Would Jesse, would you please join us up June 11th, 2019. Whereas Jesse Duarte, now a senior reporter, has worked at the St. Helena Star since January 2006, following graduation from Pacific Planning Commission, the city departments, the St. Helena Unified School District, and a wide variety of log, local weather statistics, and items for upcoming community events, attends the Star's weekly editorial board meetings as an unofficial member, and serves as the board's most valuable fact checker. Whereas Jesse has often written most, and sometimes all, of the Star's front page stories, and with his reporting frequently picked up in the daily Napa Valley Register. Whereas Jesse shows genuine regard and respect for the people he interviews, even local politicians, and has built a solid reputation for accurately and fairly portraying his subjects. Whereas Jesse's reporting and writing skills are widely admired and acknowledged, as shown by the three Whereas Jesse reads more books in a week, in a month, and in a year than nearly anyone, and frequents Liza and Main Street Books to feed his voracious happy habit. Whereas Jesse and Rethel are proud parents of their son Will, who will turn two in August. He was named after the bard William Shakespeare. And immediately steps up if someone needs help. And whereas Jesse is well-loved throughout the community, earning many plaudits from our citizens. 2019, let the wall, let the wall between the journalist and the governmental entity he covers give way so that we may honor and celebrate Jesse Duarte. City Council issued this proclamation on behalf of the city and asked all our residents to join us in expressing our deep gratitude for Jesse Duarte's many contributions to our city, and especially for Jesse's journalistic excellence in covering our city and presenting the news. Thank you. His family come up to the front? Could Jesse's family come up to the while they're coming up?
Too young to get the golden handshake or the wristwatch. And I confirm that, right? No engraved wristwatch or golden handshake. But the takeaway is that when we admire people and we love people in our community, let's not wait till they leave or pass on or do something else. Let's admire people and show that love while we're alive. I admire this gentleman so much, and I know our community does too, that I felt compelled to move this forward, and I'm so proud to do it. You know, we were thinking, we were all contemplating whether we should give Jesse the key to the city, but we thought otherwise, being that he's a journalist. So we decided to do a proclamation anyway. So thank you, Jesse, very much.
Very much, everybody. You're really kind. Thanks. Okay. We'll move to consent items. We have eight point one and eight point If there's anybody that would make a motion that we could pass these together?
Move approval.
Second.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cooperstein?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay, so now we're going that now. Mr. Press, which is there anything I have to do to? Oh, okay. So she's coming in now?
She may be en route. She's en route now.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So
Thank you, Mayor. So earlier this year in March, PG&E sent the city a letter regarding an electric transmission project planned for, um, the hills west of the city through the city and up to Calistoga. This And we asked PG&E, as you recall, to present a, to provide essentially an overview of the project to the community and the city council at your April ninth meeting. And since that point in time, uh, we've received that they have learned of an additional tower, not a replacement tower, but an addition was information that wasn't available, apparently, to the PG&E staff that presented to the city council in April. And so we've also become aware of some facts and circum We've prepared a letter, uh, with, in conjunction with the special counsel and the city man The letter requests the public, the California Public Utilities Commission to immediately review the project and halt construction within the city while the parties meet, discuss, and potentially revise the project description and alignment to reduce impacts to the city and its property owners. I'll pause there. Um, our special counsel, Harriet Steiner, is available to answer any questions you have about the letter. And, um, we'll try to answer those for you. And I know there's, uh, members of the public interested in public comment on the matter.
Initial thought?
I have a comment, a question of counsel. Is this the strongest possible letter that we could issue to PG&E, given the circumstances and sort of the poor, um, notification that they provided us and, and also confusing notification?
I don't know that it's the strongest letter, but it covers all of its, all the to take in the letter, um, because we could clearly use stronger language, but, um, but it covers everything and it requests the remedies, I think, that the council as a basis for, um, talking to your other state down at table and talk about exactly what they have planned, at least as a first step. So, um, so we could strengthen the letter, but it would, but, but not so much with respect to what's the content.
When I read it, I thought it sounded strong, so thank you for that. And also it covered everything that we want in there. So I'm looking
I, I guess I don't know what you mean by strong. Um, it's all relative. From a lawyer's, my lawyer's perspective, it's quite strong.
That's what I was wanting to hear from the legal profession.
All I was saying, I mean, I didn't, I didn't write a letter that was like, you know, sort of a, a mealy mouth letter. I don't want people to think that, you know, I just, you know, I mean, different people have different ideas.
Well, well, also we don't
Well, yeah, in part because they didn't disclose to you exactly what the project was going to look like and exactly what it's gonna be. And then the comment period is over. And so basically what you're doing from a purely legal standpoint is going back to the CPUC, um, and asking them to consider your comment, even though it's late, right? Which they have a rule that allows them to do that, but they don't have to do as much momentum as you can and encourage the CPUC to review the letter as well as getting the PG&E to consider and share more, at least share more of their plans, so people know exactly what might happen and then can decide what appropriate action they want to take.
So, so just for Commission?
Correct.
Which is the oversight body of PG&E?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and
But you might also want or an assembly person, um, as well as, you know, other, other interested, um, officials in
A spear in the, um, community's ability to sort of get attention by CPUC officials in Sacramento, all of those could be combined together to actually show that, hey, this is actually very important to folks in Napa Valley, upper Napa Valley, and the city of St. Helena. Nation doesn't perhaps do much, but multiple.
Well, I, I think that the, at the place that you are at right now, um, one letter is a start, but I think that, um, gathering people to support that letter and support the issue, um, would be very helpful. I mean, would be extremely helpful, I think.
Is there a timeframe under this rule within which they have to respond to our letter?
No, they don't have to respond.
They could just never say anything.
They could never say anything.
Okay.
So today, uh, Mr. Presswich, the city manager, and I had a discussion with a representative from PG&E. PG&E could not be here tonight, uh, but we spoke, uh, this afternoon. Mr. Presswich, do you have any thoughts on do is open it up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council, uh, for discussion. Um, so I will open the public comment, and please, if folks could keep their comments to four minutes, that will help us, uh, move forward.
My name is Jessica Hague. One hundred block of Hudson Avenue, became aware of PG&E's intention Transmission Line Support Tower in our neighborhood around May twentieth from a PG&E subcontractor. In a face-to-face meeting on June fifth with PG&E representative Marty Hunt, he confirmed that this is designed to last for at least two generations, well over a hundred and fifty years. And expect to complete their work by this fall. No direct written notice was provided to affected, affected homeowners on along the line that spans our home sites. And I quote from Advice Letter fifty-five-hundred-E. Once in St. Helena, the line travels north which the point, at which point the line continues southeast along Hudson Avenue for approximately point three miles. At the intersection of Hudson Ave- approximately point one five miles. It should be noted that this point, point one five mile or eight hundred foot span of high voltage transmission line is the only section that spans residential home sites in its entire twelve miles. Alarmingly, construction of the new tower along this span is not disclosed in this letter. As city officials, this should raise significant concern that other new towers and construction plans may be developed by PG&E within city limits that have not yet been disclosed. More St. Helena residents and homeowners may be blindsided, as we are. PG&E is currently clearcutting forested land with total lack of regard for property rights or the negative effect on its, on the landowners. PG&E is seeking to improve the high voltage lines on the basis wildfire risks with their community wildfire safety program and its residents. The safest alternative is to remove high voltage lines from residential, residential backyards. This line spans eight hundred feet over nearly a dozen home sites. To reiterate, this line, this eight hundred foot span, is the only section that spans residential home sites in its entire lines. It is twenty feet from my back door and less for my neighbors disclosure from PG&E, the time to consider better, safer alternatives, including undergrounding the line for the eight hundred feet that it crosses home sites on Hudson Avenue. Construction of a new eight, fifty to eighty-five foot tower will have permanent unrecoverable and negative impact on our property values and the safety and character of our neighborhood for generations. Today, I am asking you to reach consensus vote to send the public comment letter to the California Public Utilities Commission. I see this as, this as an appropriate first step to reaching full disclosure of PG&E's fast-track plans for St. Helena. Halting construction will allow time for full disclosure and to consider appropriate alternatives. An installation designed to last a hundred and fifty years should warrant time to evaluate its appropriateness and safety. I implore you to unify with other local, city, and county agencies who are now representing themselves investigate and file to be party at CPUC proceedings on the issues presented here. Please get a seat at the CPUC table. On the additional topic of strengthening the language of the
Uh, if anybody wants to know is on the website, eleven, item eleven point one. I don't know if we have any copies that we brought. There are some copies here if anybody wants to read the letter.
I was just going to say on strengthening the content of the letter, I would just ask that you consider utilizing the word safety as much as you can.
That's right.
Finishing. Thank you. Please.
One five four Hudson Avenue. Uh, for the benefit of those in the audience and those, uh, now watching these comments remotely, uh, want to share several, uh, meaningful details. First, uh, the earlier referenced Advice Letter fifty-five-hundred-E states, "The company believes this project qualifies for the franchise, road widening, setback easement, or public utility easement, or any utility corridor designated precisely mapped and officially adopted pursuant to law by federal, state, or local agencies for which a final negative declaration of environmental impact report finds no significant unavoidable environmental impacts." "We are directly challenging that PG&E has documentation to support this claim. No such easement for my property exists in Napa County records. An unrecorded grant of right-of-way for the eleven hundred block of Hudson Avenue, uh, dated in May fifteen, nineteen twenty-eight, furnished by David Thomas at PG&E on June fifth, specifically stipulates that no additional poles are to be placed except by future agreement." "Second, there are two versions of Advice Letter fifty-five-hundred-E, both dated March twentieth, two thousand nineteen, with the same subject, but contain conflicting information on the quantity, type, and height of replacement support towers. This was discovered by my wife, as well as city manager Presswich, in a conversation on Monday, June the third." "Clearly, the content was manipulated." Protest period. As a reminder, that protest period elapsed on April the tenth. And E, we are actively reaching out to political officials for their assistance. On June the fourth, Senator Bill Dodd was personally staff member, Alex Pater. Alex has been in contact with PG&E and the California Public Utility Commission and would like to be invited to attend meetings held on this topic, uh, including those with you or with PG&E. Link CPUC related matters. Closing, I hope these facts and momentum, uh, the Hudson Avenue homeowners have created, will create, and have created will compel you to take, uh, action the following ways. Perhaps reach consensus vote to send the public comment letter to the CPUC get the attention and time we need to gather necessary information to guide is to protect our property owners' rights. PG&E has provided a false claim of easement rights to construct a tower on our property. With what other rights are they claiming to have? Please help ensure that they cannot obtain new easements now. Finally, please consider other actions beyond a comment letter to stop PG&E's work within St. Helena city limits, uh, until their intentions are fully disclosed. Uh, proper documentation is provided, and alternatives are sought, which prioritize the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there additional public comment?
Hi, my name is William Wagner. I live at eleven sixty Hudson Avenue, right next door to the hay. I've been talking with them a lot, obviously, so I'm really here to back up everything they've said. We've discussed it. We're on the same page as this. There are a couple of points I just want to bring up. We never actually received that letter from PG&E. They didn't send it to us. They said we found that documentation. The second thing I just wanted to let people know is that we did set up a website those and all of our statements and ways to contact people, and that's at HudsonAvenue.org. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Please.
I'm on the other side of the hags. Uh, and looking at this letter we're sending out here, one of the things when we had a meeting with PG&E recently that struck me was the urgency with which they're looking at this project, and they're trying to fast, have fast-tracked it. It's pretty, pretty obvious, but this is a high voltage line when it comes down to St. Helena. It wraps around, goes back up to Calistoga where there's inadequate power right now, and they have a temporary generator, uh, complex up there now, which is not popular up in Calistoga, which they probably like to get rid of. So there's an urgency on their part, and when we made questions to them about this, that, or the other alternatives, they said, well, that would, that would take the CPUC years to take care of that. And so that was kind of default, uh, response on a number of things. So I think, given the fact that when we're talking about wordsmithing here, uh, we would say, okay, you know, you guys are putting this on the front burner, and it's on the front burner for us, too. So anyhow, I, I just think that, uh, we need to make a little more progress in their response to us and, uh, that they're not, um, you know.
Public comment.
Hi, Daniel Villasenor, eleven forty-two Hudson. I'm also a neighbor, uh, with these gentlemen over here, and, um, uh, I just wanted to, uh, just say that I, I support what's going on, uh, with this I just found out about it, uh, the other day. Kevin, Kevin came in and told me about it, and I'm just here to pledge my support. So, um, uh, please, uh, if we can do something about this, I appreciate it. Um, uh, you know, we had our turkey, and then I surprised my wife. I found a I was getting ready to cook, and she got pretty mad. So, um, you know, she, she's still mad at me. I got that extra turkey, and she threw it out. So, um, please, don't put that extra turkey in the oven, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional, uh, public comment?
Hi, uh, my name is Allison Hackett. I live at one-one-two-six Hudson landscape. Um, and if they are to remain as is, that's fine, but if there are changes that are to be made, we deserve the time to, uh, process. Um, 'cause this affects not only our homes, but I think all of the homes, um, So it has been very troubling that there has been so little communication over So it has been very troubling that there has been so little communication over what would be a huge change to our neighborhood, and we should be allowed the time to hear all of the facts and what they are proposing. And so, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there additional comment?
I find myself here again. Hi, my name- Scott Street, and I'm here because I think it's real- I do not know a lot about PG&E. I don't know hardly anything about- way and is happy to run roughshod over St. Helena. I understand that we all need power. I don't think that any of these people are debating that we want power for the entire community, the entire state, sure. But to fast-track something that is so clearly unsafe and for our city to just roll over and say, "Okay," which obviously you aren't doing, thank you, it just makes me deeply, deeply uncomfortable with what comes next. We're sitting here having planned blackouts because their power lines already are blowing down, causing fires, and are not safe. I think that anyone with means is starting to look at things like solar and battery generators so that we can unhook ourselves from PG&E, because they come with a lot of problems. And the idea that they're going to solve their problems pretty- city to accept. And I hope that we do fight this, at the very least, so that we can have a place- the residents of Hudson or the rest of us at all. And I'm offended. So that's about it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. But the floor is still open for public comment.
Good evening again, Mike Hackett. I'm from Angwin. A mistake to put down PG&E these days, right? Because we all are depending upon PG&E to bail us out- ship without a rudder. They're in bankruptcy, and they- issue. If you could all just come up to Angwin and drive around, you'd know what I'm talking about. They are going on to people's property without any pre- without letting them know ahead of time. And there's a huge disconnect between those that do the work and those that plan it out in Sacramento. It's just unbelievable they have, "Oh, my wife wants to move. It's so bad." You know? And so you're dealing with an organization here now that is not considering citizens' rights. And all of the speakers talked about safety. I was an airline pilot. Safety was paramount, right? Safety, 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 sa- safe. If they're going to put this line in for the next 150 years- voltage wire up again, are they? We're going to get much smarter in the next 100 years, I would hope, that we're not running high-voltage wires over the top of anybody. This needs to be stopped immediately. I saw Supervisor Dellen here, she can't control the CPUC, nor can you. But if you all work together, along with the citizens that live- sit or stop, reconsider, let's get this underground. This is outlaw behavior on the part of PG&E, and it must-
Pause. Any other public comment?
Counsel, comment. I have a comment. I'm wondering in the first paragraph, the- None of them received any personal notice. I'm wondering if any was required, if PG&E thought they were exercising some right under an easement, or they were required to notify-
Generally, because of the length of the line- Sorry. Because of the length, this is my understanding, you have to understand, like, I've been involved in this now for 36 hours, maybe. So, but generally, if it's a really long line, then they publish notice. They don't necessarily notify property owners until they show up at their front door to do something in their backyards. I'm not saying that that's proper. I mean that that's good behavior. I'm just saying that the actual formal notice is often given by, you know, display ads and the like in newspapers. I'm not aware of an obligation of theirs for sizable projects to notify every property owner. It's not that different from the city. If the city was doing something that affected half of the city or a third of the city, you would publish notice in the newspaper many times and not- I'm just saying you wouldn't be legally required to do it.
Well, in this case- hanging on the poles there. And in this case, I don't know that these people would have any reason to expect that this was- a huge pole there that's being replaced. I'm just wondering if we can strengthen the lack of adequate notice of-
detail for the letter. I mean, because, as I said, I mean, I read a lot of stuff. I think so. And I think that, especially when there's not an easement of record. And the other thing is, investor and utilities tend to use this word, you know, reconductoring, to cover a host of things that aren't, in my opinion, really reconductoring. Reconductoring is like to go out and put new wires up, not to go out and not, you know, take out every pole, add bigger poles, add additional poles, and then put wires up. So I think that it was a misnomer at the minimum to start to, the way they described the project.
Well, maybe we could work some of that into the first paragraph, about how, you know, what they are actually doing is not what you normally think of as reconductoring.
Right. Well, that is, that's why I said, I mean, this is a draft letter. There's some of that at the very end, but rearrangement would-
main things we're hanging our hat on here, if I get the drift, that there was a notice that, and then it was changed when there was one day left in the comment period.
It may have been changed after that date, and the president-
Knock on the door at the neighbors occurred after the comment period was well over, and that was the first indication anybody had. But a new transmission- going on here?
I have a question. Do, does PG&E for these high voltage-
PG&E always needs an easement or a right- ability easements, so the streets and the easements that the city or the county might get as part of subdividing and the like. Sometimes they have private easements where they go out and buy an easement. Some of the really, really old lines were put in before people cared. And so you don't always, you know-
So this is a good example of-
This is a good example of that.
Where there is a very old easement which has not been modified or brought up to date, or-
And as far as, I mean, what I've heard from the property owners is that it wasn't recorded either. So they had really, other than seeing the line-
So there is no easement.
Well, no, recording is only notice. It doesn't mean that the eas- it doesn't mean the document doesn't exist or isn't valid. It's just when you record something, it's to give notice to future property owners that there's something there. You know, here you had, you know, the poles and the line, so there was visual notice. Give them actual notice of, for example, the width and the rights and things like that.
Interesting. So I would, maybe the rest of the council would agree with me, I would encourage you, if you have time after this meeting, to- this particular line, both south of- little neighborhoods. It's, I mean, it's, you know, it's a sort of historical and non- sort of different uses of accreted. And I agree with the neighbors that really the best solution would be to dig up the street and underground it. Perhaps in this sort of emergency need to get Calistoga back online, because this- maybe the city could, you know, with all due respect, move as quickly as possible to allow, from our perspective, some sort of an emergency effort to underground these things, which would be a better outcome, I think, for everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Okay. Yes, absolutely. Or did you want to- No, no, please. You know, I'm very disheartened that somebody from the PG&E is not here tonight, because of course I have a number of questions to ask. As we all recall, when they made their presentation, there was not one word of a transmission pole lattice or whatever being put into somebody's property. They talked strictly about replacement of these transmission poles, basically very near or adjacent to the existing- We need to get a PG&E person with knowledge of these issues to come to our very next meeting. They need to explain, because I'm feeling a little thrown under the bus, frankly, by PG&E, and I don't know if it's intentional or not, when they learn that the- and explain that the project is changing. And that did not happen. So it didn't give us the opportunity- And we all looked at it, and we said, "This sounds reasonable." And we did not find out about it. So that's very discouraging, and for them not to be here right now to explain that issue is extremely disappointing. If we need- patient with respect to what they assert are their easement rights to the property, especially the one property in question. I don't know, I mean, I, frankly, I'm an easement lawyer. I know a lot about easements, unfortunately. And there's all, you know, you can do a search of easement and not find the easement even though it is there, because it may have been recorded against a subdivision map or some other entity, not the actual property. So we should put the onus on them to establish, and we have that in the letter. But I think that would be one thing that we should ask them to bring forth. I did read the easement language, and it is troubling, because it says, "Hey, you can't do this without my permission." So those are things that are troubling for me, and I agree that we shouldn't castigate PG&E, but they have to own up for the mistake. It is troubling, because it's such a bad trend for other projects or the extent of this project going forward. They may need to do- are they going to install new transmission poles that we don't even know about? I was not privy to your meeting. More information about, we do need to weigh in, and I think the best place to do it is right here, in front of our citizens, CPUC. Issue, I hope he understands the very troubling letter that was modified, but the date was the same. That, to me, is very troubling. There's a- explain. That is completely unacceptable for this community. Can elicit to get to the bottom of that-
All said it all. So I just want to send this letter and have all of the other elected officials be, ask them to see if they'll join us with that. Also, I wondered if there was a place to put in this letter to ask for that communication that Paul brought up about, is there another poll to let us know about that, for what is the impact going to be for our residents? I think the rest of it's in there in terms of immediately stop the project, slow it down, provide us with some alternatives, communicate with us, and tell us what they're
Excuse me. Is having them reconsider or look at other options, such as undergrounding, the intent is to slow the process and open up the discussion. If part of the reasoning has to do with safety issues or property values, does that need to be highlighted in the letter? Or will there be an opportunity later for that discussion if we don't highlight it now?
So we did, I did put into the letter- in here, within the paragraphs. I don't have any, I mean, I don't know what your practice is. I'm perfectly- forum to finalize the letter and rearrange it and get it out. Contact with people to try to get the CPUC to, or, I mean, the PG&E can stop itself, you know, but I, based on what I've heard, I think they might need the CPUC to tell
So if we get you the information, in a sense to finalize the draft, how soon could that be ready to go forward? Have two council members look at the letter?
Mayor, if I could just work with you and the vice mayor, I think that would be a speedy way of moving it forward, and I think by the end of day, end of day tomorrow, we could probably have the letter transmitted.
Okay, very good. I'm fine with that. I've already reviewed the letter, so I'm very comfortable with the letter. But there are some tweaks and some strengthening mechanisms that couldn't go into place. Happy to work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is it appropriate, from a government entity perspective, to CC our- is the CPUC board organized by zones, or is it statewide? I mean, do we have a rep on the CPUC for the Bay Area or Northern Bay Area, or-
There are several representatives that come from Sacramento, Northern California. They organize themselves more by topic than by area. So there's not like a representative that's- is representatives who come from this area or come from Sacramento or are interested in this area. Actual CPUC members. I see, I would send, myself, I would send a CC to Senator Dodd, to Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguilar-Curry, I think she's yours, and-
No, I'm sure it's helpful, and then the-
For better or worse, but do, are there also staff members at CPUC that spec-
Have a point of contact at the PCU, who we will be, it's a staff member, and so we will transmit the letter to him as well and explore ways that we can enhance communication on the subject matter.
Do we need to go meet him or her?
The PCU hadn't signed to us for approximately six months, the last six months.
Yeah, I had coffee with him after I got elected.
Oh, that's the, yeah, I did, too.
You did, too. I saw you. So-
So that's our, so that's our rep.
You weren't pressured enough to bring this up?
I left him a voice message today, and I plan on-
No, this is, actually, this is really good. He's relatively new to CPUC. No, this is, actually, this is really good. He's relatively new to CPUC, but he was very eager to be of service to us. Let's bring him back up. He was happy to travel. Let's bring, I don't know if he's met with the reps from the neighborhood, but he should come back up here. If, do you want, besides Anna, would you like me, I mean, should we reach out to him? And, I mean, he needs to travel.
Are you referring to the PUC representative or the PG&E?
PUC.
This letter was planned to be transmitted, so I'll be speaking with him tomorrow.
Yeah, great. He should, he should visit. He should visit our lovely town. We can take him to lunch or something and get him excited about our concerns.
Okay. So do you have the direction? Myself? Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll move on from that. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I think we're going to take a five-minute break and let the room clear, and then we'll come back, reconvene for the additional items. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Is he? Did we lose David? Where did he go? We lost David there.
Success.
Okay, we're going to move on now. This is item 10.1. This is consideration of and direction regarding conceptual indemnity and defense ordinance for certain housing projects citywide. This is prepared by our city attorney.
Thinking council direction regarding a proposed ordinance that would relieve, in part, the obligation of an applicant that has received a land use approval from the city to defend and indemnify the city and to pay the costs of litigation challenging the city's land use decision. The conditions of approval, and I believe it's a fairly standard provision. The council previously considered this matter back Mr. McGrath related to a project at 632 McCorkle Street. The application of prevailing wages in the event that the city provided relief to these costs of defense. From the Department of Industrial Relations. That letter was To date, no response has been provided from the DIR. Provide more information. The applicant, Mr. McGrath, we understand is would like to try and get some resolution of this issue in connection with providing occupancy. Guidance from the council on the item. There is a draft ordinance in your report for the council to consider, and it provides some guidance, or we're seeking some guidance if the council is interested in pursuing this item. If there is interest, what we're hoping to get from you this evening is some parameters under which would be granted. Certainly, the, the draft that's before you, that was prepared some time ago, does, it only applies to, to costs of appeal, so it doesn't apply to costs that would be incurred at the trial court. To uphold the, the decision. And apparently, it would only apply to residential projects. Ideas and for consideration, but certainly at this point. Pursuing this, and if so, we can talk further about
Just that I believe occupancy will be requested probably within Excellent presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
So just to be clear, the ordinance we're considering is on page 76 of this. We had then we changed it to what is on page 76.
What are the changes that you made?
The original draft ordinance, I believe, said it would apply to residential project where 25% or more of the units were affordable.
Okay.
And it was through our discussion of prevailing wage and inclusionary housing ordinance that we moved to this, it's on page 76. And this is the form that we proposed to the DIR in the letter that we sent them.
So that it would be at 25% rather than 20%?
No, it's not. It's just me
How does this square with what other towns do? I mean, are we out on a limb here? I really, I don't, are we within the broad average, or are we incredible outlier?
In my experience
From my experience as well.
You mean what we're proposing or what we've done?
What, the Very private developer's obligation to indemnify the city. However, I think the council's interest when, in the in an effort to try to spur infill, small infill residential projects, which can be seen as cost prohibitive due to some of the economic
If I'm reading this right, we've been very concerned in the past about our legal bills, right? So this will increase our legal bills, right? I mean,
I was going to say this later, but I think I'll say it now. I think one thing that we learned when Mr. McGrath brought this proposal to us
Just a point of order. We typically just ask some brief questions, and then we open it up for the public to discuss.
Right, sorry.
Sort of going off on a deep discussion that's going to move us in different directions.
I was just confused. That's clarification.
We can hold our deeper comments and open it up to the public comment at this point.
My name's Glenn Gels. I live on McCorkle Avenue with my wife Elizabeth, actually right across the street from Mr. McGrath's project. My comments are not based upon the project being right across the street from me, but just in general. I mean, I think, I've got a couple of questions on this, just so I can clarify. Right? So I assume that if this was approved or drafted by the city, this would go back and retroactively cover
I guess what we're going to be talking about.
Right. But, but if it is, if it is accepted by the city, I guess
We will be discussing, yeah.
So if, if that were the case, then roughly, how many dollars of legal expenses are we talking about in terms of the appeal associated with that particular case? Point of understanding how big
The process. I think it's best that you just list all your questions, and then we'll get them, our, our staff are taking down the questions, then we'll get those.
So one, one question is
And this is the mayor. Is that, is that appropriate?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I'll do it that way. So first question is, if he does adopt this, will this be retroactively applied or applied to McGrath's project when it's finally completed? If the answer to that is yes, then roughly, what are the dollars associated with this project that the city would be asked to reimburse? That's my next question. My third question would be, if we're looking at the developer's interest in terms of additional legal costs, who covers the legal costs associated with the residents that could be bringing that legal action? So I'm surprised, but maybe I shouldn't be surprised, that we have something in front of the city council looking after the comfortable with. I've got absorbed my own legal expenses, but there's no discussion about the city council or the city picking up those legal expenses, but yet there is for the developer. I think that's totally inequitable, and I think it's consistent with Noah, your comments about what other cities generally do or don't do. So just, just a point to make there. The developer's interest. I mean, I don't want to be dispoited as a citizen of taking action against of the city, is actually discourage any homeowners from taking, you know, following their particular legal action that they can do, because in general, mostly contractors have bigger pockets than private citizens. And so that's not always as they adopted, because the developers, you know, legal bills would be completely absorbed by the city potentially, whereas mine would have to be absorbed out of my own pockets. I don't think that's fair to citizens of St. Helena.
We'll talk more about the limitations of the, of this proposed ordinance.
Mary Stevenson, speaking as a private citizen. Housing in St. Helena, which we need critically. The, the way this is set up, as I understand it, is that if and developer pays the cost of the Superior Court process. If the, if they win, and the neighbor appeals it, then, and thus, and the, the developer loses the appeal, then they, there's, they're, they still pay their costs. But if the developer wins their appeal, then the city will pay their costs for, for that process. The property on McGrath, on the McGrath property on McCorkle has been zoned high density for over 50 years. Review. There is no reason for a project that meets those standards, zoning standards, no variances, and meets all the ordinance of the city to be, to be litigated, because the neighbors don't like it. Because of that litigation, there is 24 units of housing that were proposed for the east side of town that that the, the gist of this is trying to get more affordable. Called any way you want it, but there's eight units there that will be lived in by people and families who are living, who are working in St. Helena. So city, which has become very litigious, because people don't want this housing next to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Most of you know, my name is Joe McGrath. About this time Before I get into what I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Noah, first of all, for his service. Noah and I have locked horns on many occasions, but he has managed to get there one way or another. So thank you, Noah. I'll just quickly respond. The outlier in this city is that, for a small town of 5,000-plus people, it has become an incredibly litigious and nasty place to do anything. The project that we proposed there and have built there now, as Mary said, is completely in accordance with the general plan that we, so, with the prior general plan, that we put up as the model for how the city wants to be developed. That was at its minimum density for the neighborhood, that met every setback, every, asked for no variances, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and ended up just running into a buzzsaw, because there are tools it takes to defend, to defend this, even though this is a project that is within the general plan, completely aligned with the general plan, zoned by right. What I, unfortunate, what I'd like to really talk about, though, and I presented a letter, hopefully you read it, it was really for Councilman Newsen and Councilman Shet who sort of have not been through this entire process, which is now over three years. who sort of have not been through this entire process, which is now over three years- at a sort of higher level. And unfortunately, with the discussion on Adam Street and the hotel. And it was scheduled the same time, but we waited till ten thirty and finally decided it wasn't going to be on that agenda. So that's unfortunate for two reasons. One is, there were several other people, including the developer that Mary mentioned, that were here to talk about this topic, because once they saw what I went through, they basically completely redesigned a project that would provide more median income housing and low income housing in, in Santa Helena, and they ended up pulling that. Also, because I think the topics are aligned. And when you look at the discussion on the hotel and Adam Street, I don't know if the hotel's the right thing to do on Adam Street. I don't know if that's the best use- the city is not an annual budget. It's not the need for a new city hall. It's not the need for a new police department. The existential challenge, and this is fifty-four years of perspective, is that- Napa Auto Parts, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are people who live here Monday through Sunday. Occupancy year-round community to a, my, sixty, probably less than sixty percent occupancy- are, can afford to live here, can no, the median income people can no longer afford to live here? That is your existential problem. And so when it costs me a million dollars in Santa Helena tax to build this in addition- there's nobody that's gonna come behind me without, with the uncertainty and the environment that has been created in this town.
Thank you.
I guarantee that, particularly for the type of infill project that we built. And I encourage you to go take a look at it, because I think it's a model of what should be built in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional public comment? I will bring it back to the council. Any initial comment?
No, I, I think for qualified projects, yes, that we need to move forward with this because the small projects are vulnerable. And from what I understand, this is what we need to do for our community to be able to have the infill housing.
Mr. Knudsen?
Answer. And you guys have more of an answer than I do, but all I wonder is, is this the right policy to encourage middle and middle-class housing? Is this the right one? To do things, there's more direct ways to do things. You know, I'm concerned about aligning. I'm very proud that- Actually, I really do before people move in. The scales. And I, I don't have an answer. I really don't. I mean, is this the best way to incre- Actually, because it's so far out of the mainstream, is this actually a subsidy for, you know, is it gonna be somehow distorted and used in ways that- and, you know, our budget? I don't have an answer.
May we have another explanation about mainstream? Because I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. My understanding is that it is typical for cities to ask developers to indemnify them, should the case be litigated, indemnify, pay their attorney's fees, but also pay any judgment, frankly, right? That's typical of cities in, in California, correct?
That's correct.
So when you, when you, you say something's out of the mainstream, you're saying, well, we're gonna carve out a part of that, in this case, just the appellate fees after a- where it gets very narrowly defined, correct? And you're saying that that is out of the mainstream? Or do you even know one way or another?
Your request or your question about the specific elements of the- that win at the trial court and at- and were found to be legally right? And my statement about the mainstream is that I have never seen this type of indemnity, indemnity-
regard. So it's a very narrow, first of all, how often will it occur? Who knows? The second question is, it still leaves the council with discretion, right? So there are gonna be cases where you, the council can decide, no, we don't think so. But there may be cases- This may be the only way that this, this deal gets done. We get affordable housing built. The council has the discretion to work- That often, I fully support this, by the way, if you can't tell already. This is totally appropriate under the circumstances. It's not a complete wide open, hey, we're gonna pay for all your fees. It's very limited in scope. My understanding is probably fifty thousand dollars, but I don't know for sure, fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars. It's a big chunk of dough, and yes, I'm concerned about attorney's fees, but I'm more concerned about affordable housing. So life is a matter of trade-offs, and so you have to kind of decide which one is more important in our community. And in this community, the speakers are right. We are getting hollowed out. It's becoming a second home community. Employees are not able to live here. We need to do what we can, whether affordable or market. We need to build for our employees. Experience, once you get through the trial court and you briefed everything, and, and council can weigh in on this, the briefing's pretty much done. It's just a second bite. Nothing new typically appears at the pellet level. A lot, a lot of the work is done. Shrunk at that point.
Paul, do you think there's any better way to subsidize folks like Mr. McGrath? And this-
I think all the tools should be used. All the tools, including what we did in his case. We allowed him to do an alternative equivalent, which is a pretty, you know, it's a small project, but that was- But I, I supported that. There are a number of ways. All the ways that we have at our- We're just gonna pay the developers fees. It, it can't be characterized that way. We're helping to promote housing. That's what we're doing. And I think it will help. I think folks will go, okay, there's, the, the, you know, even symbolically, if not financially, it's saying we do think that this is an important enough issue for our community that we stand by this. And again, it's after a full-blown trial where a significant amount of money is being incurred by the developer. And I know because I saw his bills. I know about those bills, and it's fairly extraordinary. And now I have more to talk about that, but that's at another time, probably privately.
Yeah, that's fine. So you see this as really sort of a backstop that is a more symbolic action? Or do you think it's actually a practical action that will, because, you know, there's the thing like, oh, I know you got my back. There's six months and fifty thousand dollars. Well-
I think on, on a case-by-case basis, it could be more than symbolic. I think it's both. But I'm comfortable because it allows discretion on- for case-by-case, and this council can weigh in and go, yes, this is appropriate time to use this tool.
Earn it all about sort of, you know, using the city to sort of- The speakers, that just, you know, is that sort of a-
I don't see it that way at all.
No, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm trying to understand.
I don't see any additional- Do the, the project have significant costs? There's no doubt about it. Litigation is not good, believe me. It's not good on either side. And I've been through hundreds of cases, so I know about that. So the best thing to do is discourage litigation, frankly. And that, that conversation has to happen at another time. It doesn't look like it's here. But that's where I would want to go. And we, as a council, monitoring the bills that are, are incurred, because we're just passing those bills on. We have to control that. That's- Bills that, that developer's getting are from us.
So discouraging, um, I think the point was that if we, or the point I was gonna sort of add to your point was that if we have a process that the citizens believe in, meaning that they're properly noticed, that the zoning is appropriate accord- before Planning Commission, and then present before council if needed, and that our legal and planning team is giving us the advice that is aligned with, with, you know, what citizens expect, that then if something is, then there's a suit, and it goes, and then it goes to trial, and then it gets appealed. And finally, at that point, we're like, you know what? We gave you a great process. We want to help because we think this is a justifiable, the, the requirements to be able to provide market rate or, or cheaper, less expensive housing overrides the desire to, to allow the developer to stand by him or herself to take the project as far as he or she needs to. Is that a fair summation of this?
Fair.
Because I, that's the one thing I think I would like to see, is that oftentimes it seems like our citizens are caught by surprise. And I don't understand it necessarily. Our zoning and, and our code is so loose, maybe that's part of it, that therefore people, people, and things have changed so much, right, over the last twenty, thirty years, that people don't feel like they've got agency. Think about the folks with the PG&E, right? They don't have a- and in their town, and on their street, and across the street from them, et cetera. There have to be rules that we all- them. And, and I think if it's fair, then everybody's bought in. And I think the per- fair aspect, then maybe this never gets used and everybody's happy, right? Or maybe they're less happy because they didn't- their lumps as part of it. But I really, I hope we focus on the ability to listen to our citizens, because I, to me, even if they don't show up, you know, that's, that's a, my guiding, that's really, I think, I hope for our-
course of many different topics. If it was monolithic and everybody thought the same, that would be a wonderful utopian goal. This, this town is not like that. When you say, listen to the citizens, I get confronted with that. You're not listening to the citizens. And I say, in fact, I am. Some people disagree with your point of view. So that's another part of it. I wish it was that easy, but people are grappling all the time, and they expect us to be sort of the, the point of resolution of the grappling. So it's not a matter of just listening. We have to listen to both sides and try to find the common good. That's where I would point, not just listening to our citizens, but focusing on the common good for our community. When we focus on that, then we will have better outcomes.
Ms. Kovacstein?
I think it's important to note that this is different than the first ordinance essentially required that we would relieve developer- Which led to, you know, looking at prevailing wage issues and contacting the Department of Industrial Relations- exercise it. And so this is not something that automatically applies across the board. It's someone who comes to us who satisfies the requirements, either by constructing the housing on site or by some alternative equivalent proposal. I think that this case actually led to the development of, you know, attorney's fees and services- at the situation. You know, I see the fees referenced in Mr. McGrath's letter. Be not reach those heights of fees based on the policy that we put in place. Activity. I'd like to know what you think about that. And I, my last question might be for Mr. McGrath. The way this is written, it looks to me like we don't even exercise this discretion until the trial court has acted. And I'm wondering, is, does that, how does that figure into the developer's thought process of whether to go- court to make your request? I don't know if that is chilling in itself, or if- Those are my comments.
If you want, yeah, please. I'll open up public comment.
So if you recall, when this was, when our trial court, when we basically succeeded through trial court, and then an appeal was brought- because it coincided at the same time where there was a- ability requirement on this project. And so the double whammy of those two things put me at a decision point as to whether to proceed with the project or not.
Been for the inclusionary bump, this kind of language wouldn't trouble you, that we wait until that point?
Well, I guess the thing that I will say is that I think I characterized it at the time, for me at that time- just as deadly going back as it was going across, basically. But I will say, just anything that takes uncertainty and risk out of a investment decision, makes it a better investment decision. I would like to comment, just, so, I do think that this is a practical and a sort of philosophical sort of matter, because I- in using litigious tools to try to shape community development outside the general plan, right? Comment about the fees. And I'll just give you one example about the fees, because the way this works is you and- that comes directly to me from the city. And this is redundant to my own personal- Part of those original fees, and I'll just, this is just one example. Ron, I think he's a good attorney, great attorney, actually a very good attorney. But this is just the nature of the beast. The administrative record is actually the petitioner's burden. I believe the petitioner in this particular case was charged something like seven thousand dollars. When we went actually to recover costs on adminis, on the fees, actual fees associated- When we went actually to recover costs on adminis, on the fees, actual fees associated with pulling together the administrative record, Mr. Brown's firm tallied almost $75,000 that I had paid in all the discourse back and forth between staff, et cetera, to pull together the complete administrative record. When I went to Superior Court, and that's itemized, that's, that's public record, it's completely itemized by the city. They charged me $5,000 to itemize it. When I went in front of Superior Court asking for relief on those fees and that those be placed back on the petitioner, the reason, the, the Superior Court ruled that $18,000 of those fees were reasonable. So I'll just, this is, this is. Just this at a very topical level, but I'll just tell you, there's an avalanche of billing that. Away and made me drown.
Okay.
But it's something that the city.
I have a final comment for Mr. Vice Mayor. I, we should have a beer and talk about the common good. Because I think if you get. So anyway, back to the item.
Keep it focused here.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's, government's fascinating, so. And fairly small thing to do to indicate, to provide some support. It seems like it's well bounded, strikes me.
I just still have a question of whether it, how it applies to this project. It was introduced long ago when it was still underway.
Well, certainly in a, an ordinance that, that you adopt, you can provide for to be retroactive through a certain point in time to make sure that this project is, if covered, if that is your desire to do so, so we can do that.
Something to what we're looking at. It doesn't address retroactivity.
No, it doesn't. And that would be more than likely would be in the body of the, of the main ordinance because this, I believe the language you're looking at is an attachment to it. So we would add some language, excuse me, in the. So that we are certain to catch this, this particular project. It speaks to the notion that this, the application of this would be at the discretion. The, the council may, and I'm presuming that's what you're relying upon. And I guess one of the issues that I noted for myself is that. Outline any sort of. Whether you wanted to just to be sort of unfettered discretion or did you want some sort of further, further guidance or parameters that would govern.
Well, my feeling about this, this all relates to this discussion we had about prevailing wage and that the first ordinance that was in front of us, we had no discretion. Discretion at that point, we might be tripping prevailing wage for Mr. McGrath. And the reason that we revised this was that we, there is within the prevailing wage law, this safe harbor that even if you do something discretionary for a single project, if it is a private residential project on private property, there is a safe harbor.
Correct.
And that is the issue that we put to the Department of Industrial Relations. And unfortunately, we don't have an answer yet. But in my mind, when I was considering it, I thought that. Somebody like a developer of a small project, it's private, it's on private land, different from somebody who is developing a residential project, say in conjunction with something else. Some developer who is truly a deep pocket and has a bigger plan and proposal in mind. And so I was fairly comfortable that we could. Some others.
Yes, sir.
There's also a safe harbor if. Been relief for people because we always have to consider other things. Down private land.
Does the, does the council envision that that's a. Obtain that relief and that you would then consider that at a meeting? The, the ordinance would be, you know, implemented and utilized. It's, that's an applicant, okay, they're, they're caught in this system or situation where they're, they've been sued and there's been a trial court leveled, okay, now, now I have to apply to obtain this relief. But then again, the, the relief only comes into play if in fact the appeal is, is, supports the city's decision. So there's still sort of a, a waiting period after that application, so to speak?
One of the things we're doing now is discussing housing in a more strategic, comprehensive way. So my thought on this is that if somebody is a developer coming in, working within the strategic goal, you know, it works within the housing strategy that we as a city and as a council have laid out. In our strategy that we're standing with them. And so it comes to your question of when, when does that sort of application come in? When do, does it come before the council in terms of discretion? Is it early or is it after the trial? Scenario, I like the word may, obviously has to come. It should come to the council, in my view, but at least I think that's the best bet. And somebody needs to make.
Ask some of these questions as I.
Good questions.
As I think I would, I would make some revisions to it to kind of tighten it up in that regard.
And so I don't think we have to fully define it to. In general, right? I mean, that's got to be, that should be spelled out somewhere. You don't get really.
The other, we, we did have a discussion, a brief one earlier. And the other thought and consideration for you to, to, to think about is whether you want, you know, because if the idea is that you want to support the production of four. Being willing to provide this financial relief. Being occupancy. Because otherwise, because you certainly will have and probably have examples of where somebody has, you know, got an application, got sued, lost or whatever, and then they just walk away.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure the city wants to see, or certainly if you've got the discretion, you would say, no. But it, does that application come to you? Is one of the conditions that the application comes to you include, you have to have completed your project?
Goal is to have built housing, then, yeah. So, so can I?
Pull your permit and start construction within a certain timeframe?
You could probably do that. You would be at risk, obviously, of, of losing that because you would have already put that. Then you're gonna, you know, but. Out, you, you don't. And if they come forward and build, well, great, that's what you wanted. So you would be client.
Maybe we could have a lien on the property. Otherwise, every person is going to be in the situation we're in tonight where the building, the construction is done. And, you know, I'm just trying to see if there's a workaround.
Well, certainly you could have collected the money and then you.
The two, not wanting to, but if we're breaking into two, in a sense, we're looking at the overall ordinance, but also looking at the specific case, if it's retroactive to the McGrath project, what is the amount? Do we have an amount of what that would be in this case?
Oh, no, I don't remember the.
It's around 86,000. I think it was 86, 86,700, right around there.
That's correct.
And that's, that's for what? That's any of the city's related fees to the appeal.
I was told 54. That's interesting. That's upon further review? Okay.
I just pulled up the, the invoices today and prepared it and that goes back to 2017 until present.
So I have. So. I think that a tool like this can be part of that. I just wanted to mention a few concerns that I had some concerns with. Before design, design guidelines were instituted, I think the community felt that there was a part of the. Thing. And was, was not allowed comment on some of the environmental issues as an elected official that I felt. But I think there was a part of the process regarding design guidelines that didn't happen. So I do have some concerns with the project. I do however, I did however, see the legal bills that Mr. McGrath. I, I was troubled by some aspects of the project, but I was also troubled by what the cost to him. So if we're looking retroactively, I would, I would not. I like the idea of an ordinance like this that, that gives us discretion. If something falls within our strategy, that we're standing with those who, who are helping us meet that strategy, where we still have some discretion. I think looking back retroactively, as I said, I was troubled by aspects of this project and want to make sure that the community and the council has a voice in what's happening. But I do think there, there can be some relief for Mr. McGrath based on, on the very high legal costs. And I think that's pretty much where I am. The. To see precedent from another city, to see something that works or what. It's a small aspect of the overall. So I think I'd be willing to look at, look at it.
One more question, you use the term, it's within the. Project, kind of like what we had here? Is that what you're?
Well. Working on a housing strategy that's going to identify a lot of different elements of how we're going to try to achieve our housing goals. Developer comes in and says, yes, we want to work within this strategy that the community is a part of, understands the strategy, then to me, it would seem natural to be an ally.
Well, but this, this technically can only be applied when somebody has met our inclusionary requirements. So we are looking at a residential housing project that meets them either through actual construction on the site or through the alternative equivalent proposal.
Okay.
Or through a fee in lieu, which is sort of the last resort, I think. But a residential project could be part of a bigger project. That was the point I was trying to make before that I don't think I made very well. There, there may be cases where you have a few residential units with something else, you know? Let's say you have a hotel developer and they propose to sell condominium units and. Signification there, you know, we have a residential project and. That lies with this version of the ordinance and that we didn't really have the first time around.
Right. I thought I saw a prior version that had some limitation on number of units and.
Said if anybody who provides 25% gets relieved.
There is a reference to the 20 unit threshold in the. Type of, or a mischaracterization.
Mischaracterization.
But obviously if the council is interested in adding thresholds such as.
And it's just wanting discretion.
If you had a little condo piece to a hotel, technically that's a residential development project. Now, that's, that's a little different in my mind in terms of housing strategy, maybe. And I would like the discretion to say yes or no.
Right, okay.
Agreed with that last point.
Yeah, you agreed with me on some of these things.
So do we have any thoughts? We're, Mr. Biddle, are you going to move forward kind of composing this? Is that the thought?
That's the plan. And I'll work with the, the city manager to. In terms of timing.
It'll have to go to the, it'll have to go to the planning commission since modified in the zoning code.
Okay, that's true.
Okay, so do we?
I think it raises a potential timing issue with occupancy and so we may want to address that.
I spoke about that earlier today. I believe, you know, in order to. As it were, in the event that the council decides not to do this, but I don't get the sense that that's where you're going. But nevertheless, that Mr. Hausch would need to require Mr. McGrath as part of the. And then, of course, if the council adopts this ordinance, he could then make application. Otherwise, if you don't do that, this, this is the one time where the city. Something different subsequently.
One other mechanism may be to allow temporary occupancy so the developer can begin the rental process, but not formalize, formally grant or release occupancy of the property.
And when you come back with this, is, is that part of what you're saying?
Well, we have to go to, one is your planning commission meeting.
It's the first and third Tuesdays of the month, published 10 days ahead of time, ideally, minimum of three days ahead of time. So there's a meeting a week from today. So.
And then it has to come back.
And then it has to come back here and then it has to come back here for a second reading and then it goes into effect 30 days after that.
Right, right.
Does that give you time between now and the next week to?
The agenda gets posted or just published next?
So the agenda's published Friday for the meeting from one week today. For today, we've also canceled the second meeting of July, I'm sorry. One of the upcoming. One of the upcoming meetings, I, I think the best direction would be if the council is interested in providing it to move look at the, what's going to take to get the ordinance updated, move it through and it's so that the rental process can begin and the units can become housing as the intent of this project is. And then we can settle up on the final collection of fees, et cetera.
You can do a temporary occupancy?
Okay. To vote on tonight.
So you're just taking the direction?
Right, right.
Okay. And you have, you feel you have the direction?
I certainly do, I do.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. We will move on now to item ten point two. This is the St. Helena downtown streetscape plan update and discussion, and this is Ms. Smithies, our public works director.
Actually, I have downtown streetscape and been heading up the streetscape portion of it, the public outreach and all the community engagement on this project. So that'll let her take the lead.
Okay, keep stalling until the thing comes on. Okay, thank you for everybody. Hi, thank you streetscape plan. And we're here tonight to sort of get your comments and fold them in and then come back to you probably at the end of July, beginning of August with the streetscape plan. Some of you have been through this before, but I just want to make sure on Main Street related to like, you know, ADA access, the paving and utilities and such like that. Wisely said, before we start doing any improvements on Main Street, we want to look at the greater downtown so we don't, so we wisely invest this money. So we have been looking at the greater downtown from City Hall to the bridge and sort of from Oak Street to Main Street, that general area in order to understand how those factors might shape the improvements on Main Street. So this process, just to help people understand, so we're going through a downtown sort of overall vision or concept plan, which is in green. Then the Main Street, the sort of phase one of that downtown plan has already, has kicked off already with some meetings with Caltrans. I mean, one of the What I want to make people understand, even though we wrap up the downtown plan, as we wrap up sort of the vision and then begin to move forward with the streetscape plan, we will not see actual construction of the streetscape plan to 2021. It just takes that long to then, after the vision, we develop the construction drawings and we work through Caltrans and we send it out to bid. Just because sometimes that delay, people are like, what happened? You know, we have these meetings and then nothing happens. So I want to be very transparent about that. This plan is really founded in community input, and we have proposed three rounds of community input through the process. First round was, you know, talking to people about what they wanted to see there. The second round was looking at some of the different options and have people comment on it. That's where we're leading to the downtown vision. And then the third round will be coming back with the specifics of the phase one improvements and working through the final details of that. In this process, we've had, had a steering committee that's been helping to guide us. We've had separate meetings with what we call the merchants group that are people who either own or have a business or own property on Main Street because sometimes their concerns are different than the concerns of the general population. We've also had sort of greater meetings with the whole community. So we've had the stakeholder meetings, we've had some stakeholder interviews. There are some people who could not participate in any of these other forums and we've actually met with them individually because they were critical concerns. We've had two online surveys, one in each round. The first one, we had two hundred and sixty-four participants. The second one, we had a hundred and seven participants. We had a pop-up event on Main Street on a Friday. We had lots of people come in and comment. It was, if you were there, you saw that we had a lot of participation. And the same thing with the farmer's market, really a lot of people coming up and finding out the project and then going online and participating. The elementary school also took this to their students and they had over two hundred students participating and talking about what they'd like to see in downtown and Main Street. So it felt really inclusive process. So just some of the things I want to highlight, some of the things we learned. In terms of character on Main Street, we were sort of looking at what's the look. What we've heard is really they want to keep sort of the historic look, but give it a little bit of sort of contemporary edge, you know, bring in some of the agrarian, not to get Disneyland and too cutesy to be authentic. And this is something we heard echoed at the planning commission too, to be, to sort of be St. Helena. In terms of amenities, people wanted to see to improving the Main Street area, we heard pots, seasonal lighting, seating, alleyway enhancements. These are, these, I'm telling you some of the things that were major, that people wanted to see. Wayfinding, historic markers were very important to people, and basically expanding the pedestrian zone. So as I, so capsulize it, the idea of expanding the areas for pedestrians to, to, to be in, creating a sense of place through art, historic and agrarian references, and to basically expand the downtown core. Right now, the downtown really is kind of from springs to Adams. But the idea was we want to extend that downtown experience all the way to the bridge, all the way to City Hall, and even to go and reach sideways on the side street. So it's not just this too little block thing, but that that downtown core is extended out. One of the ways that we're capturing more pedestrian spaces is we looked at all the places that there were red curbs. So, and with the red curbs, we have this opportunity because you have this sort of area of asphalt that a car can't park in, it's not a travel lane and people can't be in. And if we move the curb out in those areas where it's red curb, we can pick up more sidewalk pedestrian area without losing any cars, because this was also very important to not lose any cars. So we went and looked at all the areas where there were red curbs and, you know, of course at corners, those occur, so you can create bulbouts at corners. In some of the intersections, the sort of T intersections where we extend the curb out, there were areas where we had fire hydrants. I mean, we looked at them all, and I think, you know, that we came up with a lot of areas to add more pedestrian space and the opportunities that allows for us. I'm going to start you very quickly. I'm going to walk down the street sort of high level. If you have any questions, ask me. So starting at the bridge, which is on the right side of the exhibit, you have a bus stop there. On each side of the bus stop, you've got little red areas, and what we're doing is we're poking out into that to sort of actually define the bus stop area better. The transit really likes this because a lot, oftentimes people will sort of park in the bus stop area and the idea that it would get defined better. The first really large opportunity occurred though, basically in front of the Sunshine Market area from that intersection, because you have that red curb at the corner and it goes all the way down, we have an area where, as you can see in the lower left-hand corner, where we can recapture a huge section of the, of the unused asphalt, plant that area, maybe create an art walk. You also have the area in, you know, in front of the Wells Fargo, there's a public sort of landscape area that's kind of mounded up with some trees. If you go from the curb to that area, you end up with about thirty-five, forty feet of plaza area that we're able to like now, when you arrive in St. Helena, you come across the bridge and instead of sort of this views of parking lot and stuff, you're greeted by a pedestrian space. And people love the idea of sort of chairs in the space and different kinds of things. One of the questions we'd ask in the online survey, because you could extend this experience, and that's with the red area, but it would cause to lose some cars. It was a little bit mixed in the online survey. It was sort of half and half. But our recommendation at this point is that you don't lose any parking stalls. You can always come back if other parking opportunities arise in the community and recapture that. But we, we sort of get the impact of that. As you move down the street to where the gas station is going right now, that gas station has two big driveways exiting out onto Main Street, and the one nearest the corner is actually unsafe. It sort of conflicts with the, the sort of pedestrian kind of exiting with a car behind them. So what we're proposing is you would close that driveway so that you still have access into the gas station from String Street. You're still exiting onto Main Street, but you're not exiting that close to the intersection. So that allows us to get a little more green space and once again, take that intersection and introduce more pedestrian sort of space. My vision has been to not have this road that people are sort of clinging on the edges, but when people arrive in St. Helena, it's like a pedestrian downtown that cars happen to drive through, to really kind of flip the idea that people slow down. There's activities and things happening and they're, they're really experiencing a true Main Street, not a highway that Main Street happens to be hanging on to. As we move down the street, so now we're at Hunt, which once again, because it's an intersection, we not only can we bulb out, but you have that whole area at the intersection where we can move the curb out. And you see how we're able to create sort of a plaza area in front of where the Telegraph Alley sort of comes in that connects from behind. Moving further down the street, conveniently, there's a red, a fire hydrant directly across from the theater. So we can bulb out there, and when we go across the street, because of the, you know, the length of parking stalls, we can kind of adjust them a little bit and create a little space in between with sort of the leftover to allow a mid-block crossing there that actually aligns up with where the theater is that, and, you know, a lot of people mid-block cross in Calistoga, in St. Helena. Some of the imagery you see below were like the kinds of things people want. They want more places for people to sit and gather is, that's what we consistently heard from people. The other thing that had a lot of support is the idea of setting up Hunt Street, so we could have temporary closures of it to have events on it. So you can reroute the traffic around and, and, you know, set up food trucks or something. Maybe it's the first Fridays or, you know, once a quarter or something. You have some kind of event, but really creating in that street life and that works with that intersection. So once again, to celebrate. The idea of doing this chalk fairs or art or something like that there. Then of course, the alleyways, improving them. And there are three alleyways in the downtown. And so the idea of you're connecting sort of these reservoirs of parking that are behind the buildings and having people come through to Main Street. The improvements that people most wanted to see was some lighting in these alleys and sort of to bring art into them and of course, paving. We're showing the Telegraph Avenue one and how it would line up with the proposed restrooms. People, a lot of people wanted to see restrooms and not only see restrooms, but have signage telling you where the restrooms are. So that lines up and that would go all the way to Oak Street. And if we work something out with the school, church about using their temporary parking, this would connect up. This is where the public parking is there. So then continuing to move down, once again, we talked about connecting the City Hall block back to the downtown. And part of how we do that is getting you across the street. Right now, the bulbouts help you sort of lessen the impact of the gas station. I mean, it feels a little scary actually in that segment when you're crossing and such. So do the bulbouts there. And then once again, down by City Hall, we have another bus stop that actually we've now painted some red curb because people kept parking in the bus stop when they were trying to park at the post office. So we're proposing to take that little piece of red curb and bulb that out. Ideally, we could put some kind of iconic art element such as we had at the beginning, so it sort of unifies. And when you are in the downtown, you can look down and see where the park is. You know, I've been coming here for years and years and didn't even know there was a park there. So once again, to start to make it all feel connected up together. Really important also is, as we talked about, the alleyways, the blue alleyways and the A lot of people feel like they're parking on Adams Street just around the corner and it feels so far away and yet they'll park way down at the other end because they're not part of the downtown. So having that wrap, either with some of the improvements that happen on the streetscape or encouraging people to, to do murals and wall art. People really liked a lot of things that would happen on the, on the buildings and sort of getting that public-private partnership having. But getting the downtown to, to be more than just the front door of pattern that you would see more consistently in historic areas where them back, right tree, right kind of irrigation set in, put them in with tree grates so that you don't impinge on the pedestrian areas. It's really important that we have sort of what we call the merchant zone, you know, an area like it's a couple of feet next to the merchants where they can put pots and things that we keep at least five feet, if not more, of pedestrian circulation. And then we have this area that's adjacent to curb where you have your street trees and streetlights and such like that. So you have clear distinct zones that things happen in. One of the things we'd like to see is, even though we're talking about concrete, is some embellishments that happen to them. Maybe there are leaf prints or some historic markers and some of the stories. And the planning commission was sharing with us some ideas of things that could be the stories that go on, like the layering of information. So it's not all in your face, but it's something that you explore over time. Da-da.
Thank you.
I told I had to go fast.
Thank you, wow.
No problem.
Do we have any initial council thoughts?
I just have a couple of questions. The point you just made about markers in the sidewalks, we have some of those right now.
Yes, we do.
Is the intent to keep them, okay.
Yes, absolutely. And to even add more, because we'll have these bulbouts and things where we can do more with them.
Okay. And my second question is about moneyway. I mean, I see us talking about the alleyways, but we've also talked about moneyway. Where, where do we sit on doing something to moneyway?
So we've had some preliminary meetings regarding moneyway, looking at maybe consolidating the trash areas and such. So that, that rather than having hundreds of little cans all over to create sort of consolidated areas that might be, you know, evenly distributed out and enclosed, and that begins to free up space in the back area. We're looking at some slurry coating and different kinds of textures that we could have on that. What we is to start using their rear spaces for outdoor eating, but just beginning that part, that, this is definitely going to be a public-private partnership because we only control the alley itself. But if we can make the alley surfacing look better, if we can get the trash consolidated and we met with the trash people about the feasibility, it looked really very feasible. This is something we'd like to move forward with too.
And just to follow up, because in the year one paving project that's currently have to bid, we have a slurry seal included as that project on moneyway. So the thought was if we can try to apply some of the street treatments that are in line with like pavement markings or some thoughts that you can put these overlays like for the crosswalk, do a little bit with the measure T funding we have for this current, like as a change order. But we haven't gotten that far yet, but
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that by moving forward now, we were still leaving the moneyway development on the table as some consideration.
Absolutely. That's what we're sort of committed to, you know, and even some private participation has already been identified. People who want to participate and move this vision further forward.
So on the moneyway, we have it scheduled for slurry seal, but what you're saying is there's a possibility of perhaps being able to do a little bit more structurally or?
So what it was, is like there's some, like there's some pavement parking materials that you can kind of do an overlay to make it look like a cobbled stone, like such as the crosswalk that they showed identified on the moneyway connection. Maybe something do a little different. It's not a lot, but it's, you know, with the minor amount of money we have right now for our year one with measure T, we could do something.
Okay.
Because we're also going to bring back the downtown restrooms hopefully in the next meeting or two. Not, not the next meeting, but maybe in July, August.
This is really great.
Isn't it fun?
Yeah, it's super impressive. I'm really incredibly happy with the work that's been done so far. And I really appreciate the participation that you've encouraged for our citizenry. It's a beautiful thing to see. And I want to commend the team and everyone involved for thinking so broadly about what the mandate is. And I'm particularly impressed so disheartening to change that in a way. I think we're going I think we're going to see some new energy, additional new energy in downtown with this sort of, it's really, people will want to stroll on our Main Street, and that's, it's amazing, actually. Yeah, thank you.
Well, I have to say, it's, the community is the ones who are helping to visualize that.
I'm also proud of our community that we came to this place, because I was worried about that, what the vision would look like with so much different input. But I think it's great. It's got right where we needed to be with keeping the historical feel with that modern little piece at the end.
Little flavor.
Flavor, modern flavor. That's a great way. I would not have thought of that as where we ended up, and it's just perfect so far to see. My other, I just had a quick question about the trees. When they're taken out and put back in, what size are they? Do you lose shade for years? Do we, how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, we aren't to that level, but yes, you will lose shade. I mean, there's nothing to be done about. We'll go in with the largest trees, it's reasonable, but often when you're working with a lot of utilities, you're kind of limited in that. So you will lose shade, just being honest about that. But we'll try, but hopefully with the selection of trees and with the kind of techniques we use, they will be successful and they'll grow more rapidly. Some of these trees that people put in these urban environments, they just, they don't go anywhere. So we'll be doing everything to get back what you have as soon as possible. But we can't save the trees as they are now and do the kind of work we need to do.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just thinking, the sun is so intense.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there something in your professional experience that also looks at creating shade in other ways than trees?
Well, certainly, and I mean, I, you can see that the, one side of the tree, street, shade is an issue versus the other side. And you can see, one side of the street has a lot more awnings and overhangs, and merchants have been dealing with that. And, do you want to say something?
I would just remind the city council that just about six months ago, you (inaudible) any discretionary process. So all merchants and building owners have the right to do that by right.
I felt in the heyday, so it's been very fun to see us get to this position to where we are able to redevelop and do all this great work that the community did for Main Street. So I wanted to come up here and say thank you to all of you. All the council to really push this forward and continue to (inaudible). Have to deal with it when they're at our age and having to figure it out. That's, it's going to be a nice gift. Seeing that start date in 2021 with no delays, that would be really good. So enjoy the rest of your evening, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Saying no, I'll close the public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any additional comment?
Just so you know, I'm all in on this. I've been following it. Mary and I are on this little committee that's sort of following this, and I've been following it all along. Very pleased with the work so far and the direction that you're taking. I'm hopeful. I'm always cautious about sending a message to the community that, you know, to have something that we may not (inaudible). These things focusing on, focusing in on the major project itself is replacing those pavers. That's essential, and the sort of infrastructure and the utilities, that's, that alone is going to make a big difference, frankly. Wondering if you saw the new goalie box in Calistoga on the, on the corner of Washington Street and Lincoln Avenue? They did some sidewalk work there. It is really weird. It's just a box right next to a red marked curb, then parking. It's out on the street. I don't know what you, they would call that, some kind of a pocket, just a box. It's, there's seating in it. It's just, the idea seems great, but it just, not, not something I'd like to see in our community. It just bare. My law office is across the street from it, so I see, nobody's, no one's using it, and I don't think anyone ever will. So just something as you drive through Calistoga to have, you know, it's just a gray. It was very well constructed by granite construction, but I don't know who designed it or if it ever was designed, but it would be something probably not to do in our community. And I'm sorry to my, my colleagues in Calistoga who I love dearly, so.
Well, I want to thank you for the work you've done. I think it looks tremendous. The outreach effort was tremendous. I have, some of the concerns I have in town have to do with flow. So as we look at making every, what we have as pedestrian-friendly and welcoming as possible, the, how, we can't get away from the fact that this is a highway running through town. A sort of handle flow coming through if we're reimagining the downtown. We do know that traffic is coming. The, the funding, is this something, as we're saying, possibly phased, looking at the most When and how we pay for things so that we're, in a sense, don't have to take a full package if that's not where we are financially. So it sounds like we're thinking that way, too. But I just want to thank you for the work, and I think this is really going to bring, bring us where we need to be. So it's appreciated. Comment, any other staff?
Well, the goal is, from tonight, with your feedback, we'll bring this back hopefully in about a month and a half or less, to, with some costs for the overall whole street plan, as well as the Main Street, so we can get that started, design, full engineering design, bring back some preliminary design costs on, I guess, the ultimate project, but then what we can actually realistically build, and then some options to add on. Because there are a lot of items that can be used with SB one or measure T funds and/or local general funds that we'll need to identify, because we do have 1.2 million that's been untouched for the grant for construction. So, because everything else has been measure T, SB one, and general funds up till now through design. So I just want that to be very clear, that we haven't touched the grant funds yet, that's held separately, and whatever we're doing now, we grant match. So going forward, we'll be, hopefully decides as a council, what recommendations you'll bring forward on how to earmark those costs so we can get a good project to replace those pavers and any other amenities that we can add above ground.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Thank you very, very much for being here. Thank you for the continued work, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
We're coming up on nine o'clock. I think we need some.
Oh, yeah. We need to do a vote, is that?
Yes, please. I need a majority vote.
So moved, go past nine. Do we have to say until how long?
Do we have a second?
Go past nine?
Second.
We had a really long meeting last time.
We'll go quick.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hootson?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to 10.3. This is council discussion of potential amendments to the 2040 general plan update and direction to staff on how to best prioritize these amendments in keeping with the established council goals. So we can talk about this in a couple of different ways. To get to them in the short term or long term, we can also consider looking at some of this as homework if we want to take the list and come back at a following meeting with our separate ideas of how to prioritize and then collate at that point. But we can open it up for discussion now. And Mr. Presswich, is this your?
Planning Director, House.
Sorry about that. Here we go, sorry, Mr. House.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to provide some brief background, you'll remember in the, through the process of the general plan discussion, there are several topics that came up over the years. And in approval of the general plan, the city council directed staff to agendize a discussion of some of these topics. Staff has essentially provided those in the form of this list. And the idea was to get some priority input from the city council for the planning department to move forward with how these should best be prioritized, keeping it very general, short-term, long-term, or incorporating this within the existing zoning code update, which has been prioritized by the city council and funding associated with that project for the upcoming fiscal year, or, and/or with the established council goal, as staff saw that some of these could easily fit in with those existing and adopted policies. So with that, just happy to facilitate council discussion. That's what this list is intended to do. The council can skip over these topics if there are some of that are not desired to be addressed, or there's also room on this to add new topics for prioritization for the planning department.
Any initial comment?
Yeah, I think we're missing one, which is McCorville. Request to rezone the north side of McCorville was brought to us at the same time of the Montevista High density, and that's (inaudible).
And this is a real time, so you'll see our, our city clerk is adding (inaudible). Instant feedback and help move forward.
And, and so we can amend the general plan up to four, four times a year?
Yes, there's some additional background in the staff report, and that's absolutely right.
Okay, and so each, each one of these would be a separate item, so they would have to be staggered or?
No, so they could be packaged as one comprehensive amendment, and then it is important to note that affordable housing amendments are exempt from that limitation.
Okay. Mr. Bill?
Just to clarify, it's four amendments per element to the general plan.
Thank you, sir.
Wow, we could go crazy. My initial thought, short-term versus long-term, is that the housing-related issues should be short-term, since we want the planning commission to get moving on some zoning code amendments. And so in that group, I would probably put, I guess I can't write with this, number two, number three, insofar as it relates to railroad. And then, you know, I guess low-medium land use goes in there, although I'm not sure we're even entertaining that idea anymore. And then 11, 12, and 13.
So if (inaudible) is also helpful, just to shorten the list and help staff prioritize.
And I do believe that the, yeah, we discussed moving away from the low-medium, right?
I'd like to advocate for my comments, which I think were pretty succinct and actually would be easy to add if the council so desires, really simple stuff. I've laid it out.
Simple yet profound. I think, I think his comments are actually things that are very, I wouldn't use the word innocuous, but I tended to agree with probably 98, 99% of it, that, I don't even know if we need to prioritize that, that those are just things that just should happen in short order.
Sure.
I guess my question is, I mean, it's always dangerous to give folks laundry lists of things, you know, hey, this is what you want to do, without really associating the cost of doing it and, and sort of unintended consequences. When you do these amendments, some things may require further SEQA review.
That's absolutely correct.
Much more money expended. I know we're going to have to probably retain somebody to be working on our (inaudible). Some of these cleanup items here, knowing that the zoning code will have to be amended. And really, they have to, even though typically I understand the general plan usually (inaudible) some of the, the larger policy views that we have. And I'm wondering if, what your recommendation is in terms of the best process, otherwise we're just sort of, I've got my list, and it's a great list, you know, and David made good comments. I have things that are not on the list, you know, youth and family master plan, it's not on my, on the list, but I've been talking about it for five years. But, you know, at some point, we have to sort of stay focused on our, our goals. So we'd like to hear from you, because you're, you've been living this for so long.
Sure. So some of the items that are related to land use are absolutely appropriate to dovetail with the zoning code update. Some of them would require redesignation, so such as if there was a desire to change parcels that are currently designated industrial in the general plan, and those may be to change to a different designation. That is a kind of more comprehensive process that would require SEQA analysis. Provide some specific winery regulations for an existing land use category, that's 100% a zoning process that could tee off the existing SEQA work for the general plan. So that's a good distinction to make, comments such as council member Knutson's that are, as you identified, are some (inaudible). This project or the general plan policies would affect the environment. Those could be wrapped into such as a first round general plan update that we could prioritize relative, very quickly. I hope, does that answer your question, Ralph?
So if we, in a sense, bundle a first round, and you're, and you're saying up to four elements can be bundled, am I?
Four amendments per element.
Four amendments per element, per year.
Okay, okay. And then, so I'm looking at the GHD reduction combined with the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity as a, if we're, you know, so if we look at the next year, we can approach this four times over the next year, how we bundle and then how we stagger when we implement, but we have a roadmap.
So along the greenhouse gas topic, that may be one to request that the ATSC review the, the policies that are in the general plan with their climate action directives and see where they dovetail, and then look to see if there are further amendments that could be made to the (inaudible). The ATSC may have identified with their directives that isn't existing or captured currently. And this is just a suggestion that the council can, can identify. Greenhouse gas reduction strategies in the zoning code council goal, put that with incorporate ATSC CADs, climate action directives. And then obviously, maybe the council can't quite identify that timeline right now because that requires some input from them, but we know that that's a directive, and, and staff can return with maybe an update on that, similar to some of the council goal updates. And then I think the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, some of council members Knutson's comments are in relation to those, so there could be some that could be incorporated and address that quickly if there's more specific elements that are identified as a part of that kind of topic. It may have to be broken up to be more comprehensive, it just depends on kind of the intent. And that also may be something that could be sent back to the ATSC, given their kind of charge.
Could you address number four? To fast-track some of the other extensions. What does that mean in terms of SEQA? I mean, it's relieving traffic. Does it require more SEQA analysis, or is it really sort of a no-brainer?
I think it would require a little bit more analysis to identify that it is a no-brainer. Because I think absolutely that the fact that the council or the policy document does not guarantee connectivity will be created with development, should the council direct identify that actually creating those street extensions would relieve some of the environmental impacts, and therefore would likely not require significant more SEQA analysis, if any.
I think that's an important one, too. Doesn't have to be in the First Amendment, depending on how quickly we're moving, but I think it's an important thing to do.
So maybe the, I'll leave the council to identify the priorities, but maybe the note is look for opportunities to incorporate circulation analysis to support extensions, or consider future extensions. Circulation analysis to consider future extension.
Does it?
I would just add on that one, not only is that a circulation issue, that's a public safety issue, frankly, that continues to boggle my mind. We need to be able to get in and out of this community in times of emergency. And I think, you know, I even worry about the Pratt Bridge being closed, and we just don't have the crossings from Highway 29 to Silver Rudder that we need, and it puts us in a vulnerable position. So it's not just, well, not just, I should say, it does, in my view, it will relieve congestion, but I think we have to really think about emergency vehicles and being able to evacuate if we need to.
That's an excellent point.
So if we look at those sort of two chunks, one sort of zoning-related, another one's transportation which is the priority? If we're going to come to it first in the first quarter, and the second one in the second quarter, which of those two is the first priority? And then what's left after? I mean, how do we?
All short-term.
Yeah, it's all short-term.
Well, and just realize, you have an adopted list of council goals that some of these dovetail with, and some of these will be additive to that list, which could affect other things. And so it's important to keep that in your thoughts, as, you know, this is additive to your somewhat limited capacity of staff.
So do we want to each take a stab at, or each, or staff take a stab at bundling and making a presentation of which four could come together in, over the next year? And then that comes back to us to look
on amending the residential zoning and zoning districts if we don't move on the ones that are related to housing?
I agree.
I also think that the, yeah, never mind.
I believe the housing, that the zoning, housing need, in my opinion.
The planning commission doesn't necessarily have to do it or spend any time on it, it would just be something that would be analyzed as part of any SEQA work.
And it's worth noting that that likely will reduce greenhouse gas impacts as well.
Any thoughts on?
No, I just, I think the environmental stuff is equally important, but that's going to be happening through that regional work that we're, we've been talking about and working on in Napa County. The important thing is just taking action. So I think as long as there's going to be things that are identified that we can move on in the next year, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to stack and say what's more important. It's all important. It's all the most important thing, but how do we lay it out if we have to? And I do agree that in order to start moving forward on our housing, which is critical, we're going to have to prioritize that.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? I mean, if get all the way there tonight.
Long, aren't we?
It sounds like number nine could come off the list. It seems like, from what I'm hearing, number 10 could be identified as a longer-term goal, but also as a part of, to be addressed as a part of the comprehensive zoning code update. Number eight will be also similarly, at least partially addressed, although if there's a desire to change their land use designation, then that would be more intensive.
I think the comprehensive update is going to kind of proceed in chunks, you know, beginning with the housing and the downtown, and so maybe the industrial and the winery follow later.
I think the historic districts can follow later, too, because that'll come with the design guidelines.
You know, the document right now is about probably 70% complete, a draft, and then so in kind of assigning things specifically housing and some of the historic features of the community. There's a lot of policy work going on right now in the community, and so it's important to keep that in mind. I think they are separate but very related, and could also have that incorporate ATSC CADs identified as number one. Be, people get started, get some traction on some of the issues, start to take over new positions, those types of things, and maybe in early fall, maybe associated with a report on the goal update that they may, that may be able to help come back with some more priorities and make a little bit of progress.
Well, one thought, too, is if we get an opportunity every quarter, is we really decide what the first one's going to be. And if we can make that determination of what that first group is going to be, that'll get us through the first quarter, and that might give us some time to further focus the second.
And I would just, I would venture that the council's somewhat already done that with the housing strategy.
Yeah, okay.
And so a lot of these kind of already will dovetail into that, and then obviously, I know greenhouse gases is also a very critical and important thing, but it sounds like there's already some movement on that with some of the policy work.
Okay. Okay, so with that, it's, it's, I'm sorry. Is this just direction? We're not doing a vote on this. Okay. Do you feel you have the direction?
Have we received public comment on this?
I will open it for public comment, I apologize. Thank you for your patience, sorry about that.
My name's Elizabeth Gels, and I live on McCorcul Avenue. And first, I want to thank you, Mayor, for mentioning the beginning of the McGrath project and that little bit of dissension that was there, so I appreciate your mentioning that. And Mary, also thank you, or council member Mary, please, thank you for adding McCorcul Avenue to the downzoning list, because, and that's why we waited so patiently, so we'd have the opportunity to mention how important it is to us. We are not opposed to housing anywhere in St. Helena, and it's unfortunate that we've been put in the, the point that I'd like to make is that McCorcul one side of the street that is medium density with, you know, family homes, and the other side of the street, again, zoned high density and done many, many, many years ago. Yours down in Brinkley Court, which is coming right around the corner. And so because there are still numerous more apartment complexes on the street, it's just not safe. Half of the street is owned by the property owners. There's no place for kids, there's no place for parking, and I could go on and on and on, but it's very important that this get prioritized, and McCorcul is rezoned on the north side of the street.
And so do we feel like we've given you direction? You feel like you have the direction? Very good. Thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to consideration, 10.4, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution adopting fiscal year 2019-20 City of St. Helena annual operations budget. And this is our finance director, April Mitz.
Thank you. I just got to know if it for me. This is, okay, I'm on. There's a motion, I don't need to go through my PowerPoint.
Is it? Yeah, we can.
Do we need to see it? Because we've reviewed this in prior meetings, Ms. Mitz. It's been fantastic.
Yeah, there is one slide that was specifically requested from the last meeting. Oh, there it is. Just, yeah, that's a summary of the changes we made. They are highlighted in orange on this document. This specifically was asked for, what is grouped into non-departmental budget? So what we did is we did the grouping from the general fund, and we took it from basically the highest amounts, took it down to anything that was basically right above that $10,000 threshold. Primarily, it's transfers to other funds, so it's the contributions to Recreation Department, the retiree medical liability, tree maintenance, equipment replacement, flood control, Fourth of July, and then the other higher one, as well as the contributions, and that's just various contributions we make to the cares and leak adjustments, and VTA, LAFCO, you can see the list on there. So that was, that was one of the things that was requested, so I'd be happy to answer any questions on that particular item. Okay. Seeing none. Net positions did not change in any the water fund is at 50%. And if you look at the three water funds combined, we're at 121% or 14 months cash. And then the wastewater fund is 29%. If you combine all wastewater funds, which is CIP and impact fees, we're at 120%. So based on that information, we also still have our add-back priority list that will come back to the city council as soon as we know what actual property tax revenues are going to be for fiscal year 20. And on that, I asking for any, any feedback or consideration to adopt the budget.
And so we'll look at those add-backs in the fall.
Probably as early as August, or middle August, early September, I'll have that information.
Okay.
So at the risk of being called a hypocrite, I do have a question on item 24, which is the code enforcement additional funding, $50,000. Is that for a consultant? Is that for, what is that for?
It's a in a partnership with a county, where they have a code enforcement officer that works throughout the valley, and we saw synergies with the idea that some of their work occurs up-valley, and there may be an opportunity to use them for 10 hours a week, for example, if we didn't need a full-time person, but find some common ground where we might use them for 10, offset the some code enforcement issues. So those are, that's an example of how we would use those resources.
What a great idea.
All right, I would move adoption of the resolution that is on page 311 and 312.
Services that the city does receive. City council did make direction on May 14th to go ahead and prepare an RFP for legal services. So since that time, city staff has been working with council member Doring, and the draft scope of work and RFP, and so that is attached to the staff report. I do want to make a comment that there is one correction that was on page three that I didn't catch, and thank you for, Vice Mayor Doring, for catching it. For general fund services for legal, we placed $441,000 in here, because that corresponds with what's in the budget. It should actually only be $245,000, because it is not inclusive of the, any special services that we have, and also litigation costs. So that is one correction that we've made from the planning, if city council is good with the draft, or if we have minor changes on it, to actually release the RFP on Friday. And then what we'll do is on page seven, it gives the complete timeline for it. So you can see, we will look to award an agreement at the September 10th meeting, based on the timeline that's proposed. So I'm happy to answer any questions and have any changes or edits to the document.
Any initial thoughts from the council? I'm going to open it for public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any thoughts?
Can you tell me how you account especially for our two, the water entity and the sewer entity?
Yes, what we do right now for our operations budget, we do have separate funds that we actually bill and code the invoices to. So we have our general fund, which is the majority of it, we have our water fund, we have our wastewater fund. Within each of the three funds, it is broken down into professional contracts and then litigation charges. The city manager does for, if we don't have a lot of litigation costs in general fund, we can use some of that money up to the professional contract.
Recommendations to the full council, rather than just have the staff work on that portion of the work. So I, because the city attorney is hired by the council, I see some value in identifying a couple of council members.
We have two attorneys on the council. I don't know if both would be interested. I'm happy to help, I don't know if you, if you're
I mean, always, but I'm not a lawyer, I almost wonder if our legal representatives might be more effective at helping to select legal representative.
Mr. Doring, thoughts?
I'm happy to do it, too. You look like you don't want to do it. Happy. Just reading facial expressions.
I think it has a lot to do with the heat in here and just a long meeting. I'm happy to continue sort of working on this. I have some expertise, obviously, but I'm not sure. It would be nice, well, hopefully we'll get a lot of different proposals, and we'll have great firms to choose from. There's no magic to it, I don't know. It'd just be interesting to see what's out there, in terms of various models. I'm looking at various models of how people approach this. Services, you know, is very subjective in terms of the high quality of services, I assume we'll get high-quality law firms, but the various business models is what I think would be interesting to look at, so that's an area that I don't know enough about, frankly, so, but.
And just so you know, I have a lot of lawyers in my family, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm surrounded by lawyers.
Do you want to take a look at, do you want to be a participant in that?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. So Mr. Doring and Ms. Chetel? Okay, very good. Okay. So Mr. Doring, Ms. Chetel? Okay, very good. So
When we get to the section on the interviews with the finalists, is that the whole council?
I'm expecting it will be. So I'm expecting that the two council members would recommend
Very good. Okay, so with that, we can adjourn the meeting. I appreciate everybody's patience, time, energy. Thank you.
So Jesse, are you going to be writing about yourself?